Okay, everybody, we're gonna get going now. Good evening, welcome to the October 23rd, 2018 zoning board of adjustment meeting. To my left is Mr. Carter Fark, who is the deputy planning manager for the city of Nashua. Across the way is Kathy Vitale, Mr. Steve Lionel, Mr. Jack Curry, who acts as our vice chair, Mr. Staphyia Boris, and Ms. Marion McKay, who is our secretary, and I'm JP Boucher, your chairman. This meeting is recorded by written transcript and video, it's also video recorded. We'll ask that you please direct all testimony to the microphone, and that only one person speak at a time. If you don't already have a copy of tonight's agenda, it's on the side table over there near the fire hydrant, the fire extinguisher, sorry. Tonight we'll be hearing requests for deviations in the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. I'll explain both. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. The five criteria required for this board to grant a request for a special exception are: that the requested use must be listed in the table of use regulations as a special exception; two, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety; three, the requested use will not overload any public water, drainage, or sewer system, or any other municipal system such that other areas of the city will be subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare; four, any special regulation for the use set forth in other sections of the zoning ordinance are fulfilled; and five, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district of adjoining zones nor be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents of Nashua. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. The five criteria that need to be established for the approval of the variance are: the variance will not be contrary to public interest, the spirit of the ordinance is observed, substantial justice is done, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished, and literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Per the city of Nashua bylaws, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. Also, this board will hear all scheduled cases as long as a quorum of three voting board members are present at this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received through Mr. Fark and the city of Nashua Planning Department within thirty calendar days from the day after a decision was made. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Fark for more information. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts. The first part is called a public hearing. This is where the applicant and the citizens address this board and speak to the merits of this case. The order of testimony is as follows. First, the applicant will have fifteen minutes to present their case. Then those in favor will have a limit of five minutes each to testify. Then those in opposition or with questions will also have a limit of five minutes each to testify. Then the applicant has five minutes to speak in rebuttal. And then finally, a representative, and only one person of those in opposition or with questions, will have five minutes to speak in rebuttal. Again, please direct all testimony to this board, and not to the audience. If you have any questions about an application, they are to be directed to the board, and we'll get them answered. Second part is called a public meeting, where this board debates the merits of this case amongst ourselves. Please note that during this meeting, during the public meeting, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. We ask that you silence your cellphones. If you need to have a conversation, we ask that you step out. Acoustics are really good in this auditorium, we can hear everything that is said. Mr. Fark, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, so, tonight, we have six members sitting. Only five are allowed to vote. So we have two alternates here tonight, Ms. Vitale and Ms. Boris, who are gonna alternate each case. So, the first case, Ms. Vitale, will participate as a voting member. Both members have the right to participate in all the proceedings, even in the public meeting section. It was just that the sixth person will not vote in that part of the meeting. We will, again, I'll announce who, again, who's voting on each case as we go along. So, the first case will be Ms. Vitale. Any questions from the audience before we get started? Okay, seeing none. We'll call the first case, we'll open the first case, which is owner, Roman Catholic Bishop of Manchester. The applicant is Saint Joseph's, the Worker Parish. The address is 777 West Hollis Street. The description is as follows: Roman Catholic Bishop of Manchester, owner of Saint Joseph's, the Worker Parish, applicant, 777 West Hollis Street, sheet D lot 76, requesting the following: one clarification from the May 22nd, 2018 ZBA decision that allowed a larger sign area in height if the board's intention was to allow changeable copy in a non-electronic form, if not, two, the variance to allow four lines of manually changeable copy in the R9 zone Ward 5. This is in the R9 district. Good, sir.
Good evening. I'm here representing Saint Joseph Church on Hollis, West Hollis Street. I'm Bob Cormier. I live at 164 Rideout Road, Hollis. I'm a professional engineer and a member of the Saint Joseph Sign Committee.
I think that microphone just went out. I'm sorry. Maybe it went off when you touched it.
Yes.
It's not on now.
Let's see if we can get another one here. Battery? Hang in there one second. Could it be?
It's working.
Okay. All right. I didn't hear it.
He reports a Scott full audio on the TV. Can folks hear me here?
Yeah, it's working now.
All right. Guess I got the magic touch. I didn't do anything.
It jiggled the batteries. Okay. Is that good? Okay. The first thing we'd just like to approach is a clarification. As we know, we were turned down for an electronic changeable copy sign, as well as graphics. When we did our application, we had put four line items on the application, and instead of graphics, we did list changeable copy sign, because in the zoning ordinance, there's a table that separates the two. Electronic sign was one thing that's discussed, and another one is changeable copy. So we did catch that on the first application. I did have a long discussion with Carter Fark, and at the time, since we were looking for an electronic sign, the both of us reasoned that that was a changeable copy to begin with, so it was rather redundant to ask for the same thing, but since we wanted graphics, we should advertise that so that it could be made open to the public that that's what we were seeking. So there was a little confusion there. During the discussions, we got the impression that we were getting a larger and taller sign, so that we could put our changeable hand, hard copy, hand changeable copy on that new sign. So we had it designed, we went for a sign permit, and because we didn't specifically get directive from this board for variance for changeable copy, or it seems like we didn't, they denied our sign permit. So the first question we have to ask is, was that your intent that we were gonna use this sign for changeable copy? And if there's no consideration there, we're prepared to go ahead with a variance request.
So, thank you very much. Again, I think we had a lot of discussion about other possibilities, but I think, you know, I can refer to my members, but my recollection is, and I believe this is the case, that there was no intention of any changeable sign at that point. It was, I think strictly, we were voting on and considering an electronic sign. So my opinion at this point, and I would also ask Mr. Curry to jump in, I think that we're looking at, are you moving on with these, with, you know, your application for a manually changeable sign?
Well, my recollection was pretty similar to yours. Quite candidly, my thoughts at that meeting was for a manual changeable copy, and I didn't realize that it wasn't permitted in this section. And if, you know, in a perfect world with perfect information, I think that would've risen, and we would've had that open discussion, but the board and the audience didn't at the time. So I think that that was my recollection also. I mean, I was leaning in that direction, but not knowing it wasn't permitted, and that wasn't part of the discussion, and I feel I prefer to have the discussion specifically about it, or line item number two.
Right, so I think that there's enough ambiguity in the fact that we were voting on electronic message sign, and even though some of us were more inclined maybe to, you know, to listen to manual change copy, I think in the end, the way it was advertised and the way it came out was electronic. So I think at this point, I think we should move on, unless any other member has any other comments, otherwise, I think we should move on with the second part of this application. Fair? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That being the case, I think I see three members that heard the original case in May, and three new bodies. So I'll try to be brief, but enough detail so they understand what we're seeking. Back in May, we sought for, in addition to an electronic sign, which has bright, has light intensity to it, which was an issue, as well as graphics, which are not allowed on electronic signs anywhere, we were looking for changeable copy, so that we could advertise our events, our blood drives, and the things of that nature, our church services. And we sought and received two variances in May for a larger sign and a taller sign. We were granted forty-five and a half square feet, where twelve feet is allowed, and we were granted up to thirteen and a half feet in height, where eight feet is allowed. So we got those two variances. So we have a larger sign, and that size sign was selected because it gives us room to have four lines of text on the hard changeable copy. So we're planning a sign with five, four lines of text with six-inch letters. The sign would be backlit and shut off at 10:00 PM. We said that on the original application, so we'll say that again. Size of the sign was approved, and it was found at the time that that size was proportional to our church structure, that it fit well. It's architecturally designed to match the slope of the roof with the top of the sign, so it looks very tasteful. I believe you have copies of the picture of what we're proposing in your packets. The site itself is unique. It is in the residential zone. It's, as you know, it's on West Hollis Street, across from very large Saint Louis Cemetery, which covers the complete frontage of our lot, so we have no residences across the street. Our lot is 11.6 acres with 410 feet of frontage, as compared to an R9 lot, 9,000 square feet, with 75 to 90 feet of frontage. I'll make the importance of these numbers come out later. Our structure is 27,500 square feet, which includes the church, gymnasium, classrooms, and office space, as opposed to a house that might be 200 to 2,500 square feet. We have a 330-car parking lot with parking, tall parking lot lights. The closest homes to us are screened with shrubbery and fencing currently, and I think I've shown pictures in the packet from the last case where you can see that. We're also located on a heavily traveled State Route 111. The speeds are higher than typical residential neighborhoods, so you need something of more substance for a sign, so that you get your message out quickly, because there's not much viewing time. With that said, I'm gonna go through the five points of law. First one is granting of the requested variance will not be contrary to the public interest. The proposed sign will blend with and be proportional to the structure of the church, and whether or not there is changeable lettering on the sign, it should not be a cause for concern, given the nature of the church use. We have submitted several photos of various other Nashua churches and a school in the residential zone in the city, that all have some form of hard copy, changeable copy signs. These type of uses that are allowed in the residential zone due to their compatibility have a need to display events and important messages, and it is not out of the ordinary to expect to see new messages on a sign at these uses. It is in the public interest to have these activities advertised and made available to residents. It is this wholesome mission that allows churches in the residential zone to begin with. Second, the proposed use will observe the spirit of the ordinance. The sign and its associated messages will not adversely impact residential uses. The intent of the ordinance is not to have a number of signs that are out of line with the residences in the neighborhood. The typical residential area has 7,500 to 9,000 square foot lots, 2,400 square foot homes, and 75 to 90 feet of frontage. The drafters of the ordinance did not want a row of large signs with changing advertising every 50 to 100 feet down the street for small home occupations. We have a large facility with much acreage and frontage, with a very large structure to absorb the impact of a larger sign with listed activities. It naturally fits in due to the nature of the church, not a residence, and will not stand out, and because of the location, our unique location, it doesn't affect any residents around us. Three, substantial justice would be done to the property owner by granting the variance. Saint Joseph is a vibrant, active congregation, with much outreach, including blood and food drives, youth activities, church religious services, and other programs. All of these activities are positive influence and provide essential services to both the neighborhood and the whole Nashua community. The church seeks to reach as many individuals and families as they can, and the addition of tasteful, proper signage with changeable messages is necessary to promote their information and programs to the public. And it was brought up before that there are alternative ways of getting that message out: Facebook, emails, other type of electronic media, the newspaper, signs inside the church. Yes, that's true. I think any marketing person will tell you, you have to touch people ten to fourteen times to get the message across. We have bulletins in our church that we hand out. They might see it on Sunday, but forget about an event by Tuesday, and if they see the sign, it reminds them, oh yeah, there's that event on Thursday night. And I'm just gonna say one case, other than this, that I can bring up the importance of a sign. This board and the planning board have created the green lawn signs that were all required to put on front lawns to have these hearings. Because years ago, there was a case on Northeastern Boulevard, where the neighbors were outraged that they didn't know about a plan that was being sought for site plan approval. The city notified all the abutting owners as legally required, and they listed the planning board agenda in the Nashua Telegraph. But unless you're constantly searching those items, you don't catch those things being presented. The lawn signs do a pretty good job nowadays. You see those green signs, you know some land development's coming up, and if you have any interest, you seek further advice from Carter or the planning staff. These are our, this sign that we're asking for is our green lawn sign. It's that extra piece that we need to grab a driver's eye, to go to our website and seek more information. So it's very important, and signage is important, it plays an important role. We use a temporary sign now to get the job done, which is a hardship. And as I mentioned earlier, there's plenty of churches and schools in the city that use the same technique. Signs are important to our use. Four, the proper use will not diminish the values of surrounding properties. The sign and its lettering will blend properly and not stand out as a detriment to the value of area properties. The sign proposed, fixed in location, not moving around, will be a substantial improvement to the temporary lettered sign that is currently utilized and moved constantly. In the packet is a letter from longtime Nashua Realtor Dan Bergeron, noting his professional opinion that the saleability and values of nearby homes will not be adversely affected. Fifth, special conditions exist such that literal enforcement of the ordinance results in unnecessary hardship. The church use is permitted in the residential zone. With that use comes the absolute need to display appropriate church-related messages. This use, by its nature, is expected to require a large display, a large structure, which in this case is 10 times the size of the local residence, and a large parking facility with parking lot lights, all of which impose a substantial impact on a residential neighborhood. Why can it not be anticipated that this facility would also need larger signage and message capabilities? In fact, the sign is the lesser of the visual impacts that I just spoke about. All of this is acceptable because of the positive influences that come from a church in a neighborhood. The drafters of the sign ordinances in all likelihood did not consider the exception of a church being allowed, and only looked at limiting the signs in rows of closely spaced homes, where large message signs would stand out. The ordinance itself creates a hardship for a church. As long as the changeable copy sign is appropriately presented and produces no harm or loss of property values to its neighbors, it should be allowed. The special conditions and location of this property allows the proposed messaging sign to be reasonable. The constant maneuvering of the heavy temporary sign with changing weather conditions is also a considerable hardship and detriment to our needed messaging. That's about all I have to say. If you have questions, I'd be glad to hear them.
Any questions for Mr. Cormier?
Just on, you had mentioned four lines of six-inch changeable text.
Yes.
I've never really been close. You have a, you know, a good job of having pictures of other signs in here. Do you have any idea what the size of those changeable texts are? I was just curious.
No, but I will say that we went to great lengths to create mock signs and move them around, and you'll notice, we've moved this sign proposal closer to our entrance, but we have telephone poles to dodge, trees to dodge, so we put temporary signs with different, we tried six-inch, seven-inch, eight-inch, and we drove by it ourselves from different locations, and we got a good feel for the visibility. And the fact that we're bringing it up from that low point below the hill, getting a little closer to the road, staying within the ordinance, it's visible, the six-inch letter doesn't make that much difference, and being black on white, we feel that it'll be very readily readable. The overall size of the sign area is very similar to what we presented in May. This four extra line is not creating that much more lettering space.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Cormier? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? Come on up, give us your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Mark Richard. I live at 28 Brookline Street in Pepperell, Mass. I have been a parishioner at Saint Joseph's Worker Church for over ten years. Currently, I am the chairman of the Saint Joseph Pastoral Council. This council is a 12-member body, whose mission is to assist the pastor in his leadership role of planning, promoting, and reviewing the evangelization, worship, faith formation, and service activities of the parish. As such, I and the council represent the 3,400 people of the parish. I'm here on their behalf to request a favorable decision for this variance request. As Mr. Cormier mentioned, organizations such as churches, schools, and libraries need a way to push information out to the community as far, as widely as possible. Changeable copy signs are one of the best means to do this. This is the reason there's so many changeable copy signs in front of schools, libraries, and churches in Nashua. I was the one that wrote the letter that I delivered to Mr. Fark that shows some of those signs in the residential districts in the city of Nashua. I don't know the size of the letters on those signs, but I do know that the size of the letters on the sign, our temporary sign that we use, are eight inches. And so we're actually gonna be reducing the size to six inches if we get this variance to put on the other sign. Like the churches in my letter, our parish supports many community efforts. We have found no method timelier or more cost-effective to getting the word out than those changeable copy signs. As Mr. Cormier mentioned, we do use all the social medias, we do use websites, we do give out bulletins, but those only work for those people who attended Mass that weekend, or who actually access the websites. So these are a way to capture these captive audiences, as they're driving by the church on 111 to get the message out. Currently, the parish uses two signs right now. We have a permanent 10-square-foot granite sign that we talked about last, in May. We didn't think that was adequate, it didn't, it wasn't lit at night, so we couldn't be seen, it didn't say that we were a Catholic church. So we've already demonstrated to you that we need a different sign. You approved that on the 22nd of May. As Mr. Cormier said, it's 45 and a half square feet. The second sign is a changeable copy sign. It's a changeable hard copy sign. It's a temporary sign. It's got four lines of eight-inch letters, as I said. And we use that to present three types of messages throughout the week. One set of messages are evangelization messages, and if you've gone by the church, you see we have these simple quotes or sayings that we hope readers will remember and reflect upon during their day. The second set of messages are public service or community service messages, and we announce events happening at the church, such as the multiple Red Cross blood drives that happen every year, the multiple food drives for the Corpus Christi food pantry that happen every year, the Boy Scout and Cub Scout events, as well as our Holiday Fair, which is actually coming up. These events appeal to and benefit the Nashua community at large. The final set of messages we send out are specially religious and educational events being held at the church, such as Lenten and Advent classes, recitation of the rosary, eucharistic adoration, and special Mass times. All of these events are open to the public, but the only effective way to get the word out about them is via this sign. This temporary sign that we use for these messages is over 20 years old and is in need of replacement. So what we're proposing is to incorporate that changeable copy sign element into this already-approved 45 and a half square foot sign, and use four lines of six-inch text. We believe there'll be three benefits if we do this. One is, we'll actually replace the two existing signs with a single sign, so that actually reduces some of the clutter. The new sign will be lit for better visibility in the evening, and like Mr. Cormier said, we will turn off the light at an appropriate time. And finally, the single new sign would create a more eye-pleasing display and would improve the neighborhood effect. So in summary, this proposed approach would result in a single sign, serving both ID and messaging, on the already-approved 45-square-foot sign. So on behalf of our parishioners, I respectfully request that the ZBA approve of our variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Richard? Mr. Curry?
Yes, sir.
Just wondering, you had mentioned, I think you said, about 3,400 parishioners. Just curious, how many of those are from south of the border, like yourself?
I don't know that, but I'll put it to the team. Does anybody know?
Probably 100 families.
South of the border? So 100 families south of the border of that 3,450.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? None? Seeing none? Anybody with questions or concerns about this application? Alderman, Jen?
Is that those people who were opposed?
Yes, yes. Questions, concerns, or opposition? I'm sorry. You're welcome.
So, my name is Ernest Jettie. I live at 15 Foxglove Court in Nashua, and I'm the alderman for Ward 5, where this church is located. And as I said the last time, I appear reluctantly in opposition. You know, these parishioners are my constituents, and it's difficult for me to be speaking against what they're asking for. But as an alderman, I feel it's my duty to point out to you that you have the duty to enforce the law. And the law that we're talking about is a law that regards signs in the city of Nashua. And although this is a church, and churches are permitted in all zones in Nashua, they also, according to RSA, excuse me, NRO 190-37, they have to comply with the laws regarding the zone that they're in. And this church is in an R9 zone, it's a residential zone. So the law regarding signs says that, you know, there are many types of signs. One is a ground sign, which is what they asked for a variance the last time they were here. They wanted a ground sign. They wanted a ground sign, which is four times larger than, than the sign, the size of the sign permitted in an R9 zone. And you, you granted that variance. When they were here, they were all, they were also asking for electronic messaging sign, which you denied. They were also asking for a changeable copy sign, and you also denied that. If you look at your minutes, you will see that the changeable copy and the electronic messaging sign were items 1 and 2, and the, the size of the sign was 3 and 4. You allowed 3 and 4, you denied 1 and 2. The, the sign, the type of sign that they want now, the changeable copy sign, is prohibited in a residential zone. And there's no, there's no doubt about that. That's why Mr. Fock denied their permit, because the ordinance clearly states it's not permitted. Now, this zoning ordinance was adopted by the Board of Aldermen. And the Board of Aldermen represent the citizens of Nashua and, including the residents of Ward 5. And they declared that, that as a city, we do not want changeable copy signs in residential zones. I think an argument can be made that what they're really asking for is not a ground sign, they're asking for an advertising sign. Evangelization is a form of advertising, a very noble form of advertising, but they're, they're asking for the opportunity to convey a message. And an argument can be made that that's advertising. Now, there are, there's a separate ordinance that deals with advertising signs. Table 103-10 talks about outdoor advertising signs. And under A, paragraph A, they are not permitted in a residential zone at all. Also, under K, changeable copy is not permitted in any zone for outdoor advertising signs. So you have to start from, from the premise that, that the law is what the citizens of Nashua want. It's what they enacted through their Board of Aldermen. And as a zoning board of adjustment, you are not, it's not your job to decide whether or not the zoning law is correct or not. It's not up to you to decide whether changeable copy advertising signs should be permitted. It's not up to you to decide whether changeable copy should be allowed on any type of sign in a residential zone. You can only grant this variance if you are convinced that the conditions for the variance have been met. And they have to meet all five. And one of those is the spirit of the ordinance. The spirit of the ordinance is clear: no changeable copy. They also have to show that they're, that the application of this ordinance to them is, constitutes an undue hardship, that it treats them differently than any other parcel of land in that ward, and imposes upon them a hardship.
Excuse me, Alderman, your time has run up. If you could wrap up, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. So I, I would like to point out that when they, when they, they talked about the, the four signs that they showed you pictures of, I talked to Marcia Wilkins, who is, works in the planning department, she's the one that issues the sign permits. She said that three of those signs are not, don't, don't have permits. They don't have variances, they don't have permits. Only the school sign, the Mount Pleasant school sign that they showed you, has a permit. The other three don't. And I point out to you that, that this church has, has been successful for a number of years without this type of changeable copy sign. Other churches in town have been very successful. Immaculate Conception, one of the largest parishes in the state, does not have a changeable copy sign. St. Patrick, which is downtown on Main Street, they don't have a changeable copy sign. Broad Street is kind of similar, that's Route 130, similar to 111. Nashville Baptist Church does not have a changeable copy sign. The Hindu Temple doesn't. Resurrection does not. Christ the King Lutheran Church apparently has a changeable copy sign, but they don't have a permit for it. It's illegal. The church also talks about this temporary sign that they've been using. That, that, number one, they're only permitted one sign, not two signs. Number two, that temporary sign is, does not have a permit. They've never been permitted for that sign. So for them to say that they're going to replace this sign that, that is not permitted to begin with is, I'm sure that, I'm sure they, they didn't know that they needed a permit. I'm assuming they didn't know, but they don't have a permit. And that's, and according to Marcia, in the planning department, it's an illegal sign.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excuse me, any questions for Alderman, Jed? Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, Mr. Cormier, you have five minutes for rebuttal.
Mr. Jettie has told you that you're here to enforce the law. The ZBA is also here for relief from the laws if the five points of law can be met. He mentioned that we need to comply with the R9 residential zone and that the ZBA actually denied the changeable copy. And I believe what we heard earlier was you weren't even realizing that changeable copy needed a variance. So I, I don't think we were directly denied this hard copy changeable sign that we're asking. He mentioned that the changeable copy is prohibited in the residential zone, and then the intent was the, what is the intent of the drafters of the ordinance? I think I went into some depth to mention to you that I don't believe the drafters of this ordinance actually knew what they were doing. They were focusing on residential uses and what do we want to see among the houses? This church is a separate lot in a very unique location, and we have a special use. If, if we're not, if changeable copy signs are so offensive to a residential neighborhood, what about the 27,000-square-foot structure and a 330-car parking lot the churches are allowed to have because they're a very acceptable use in a residential neighborhood? From the beginning of time, the center of towns had the town hall, the church, and the store. Churches were the key point of the community, and I believe our ordinance focuses on that, that they allow churches in every zone. So you can have a large parking lot and a large structure that totally imposes itself on a small house, but the sign is what the issue's going to be? I think the church structure is more of an issue than the sign. And that's why we're seeking relief. The ordinance is a hardship to a church in the residential zone. If you, if we can't have signs in, in all the facilities we need to run it, then we shouldn't be allowed in that zone if that's going to be the case. Advertising, I think he's stretching the point. Yeah, we advertise God. I'm sorry. We don't advertise cereal, we don't advertise cars. We're, we're a wholesome product. We are there, we, we provide a good product, a good service to the community, and that's why we're allowed in that zone to begin with. And yes, we have to get our message out. He says that many churches don't need this. We're successful. You can ask our pastor what success is. Let's define success. Enrollment continues to drop. Young people don't see the need to go to church anymore. In fact, we just added double our handicap parking in our parking lot because those are the people who attend church, our elderly. We need to revitalize our community for the importance of, of religion. I'm sorry, and it, there is a question on success. We, we need to use every means we can to get people's attention to the, to the services we provide. The citizens, he says, the citizens of Nashua voted for this, and that was their intent. I've had a lot of experience, 42 years as an engineer in surveying business in Nashua. Many times, I've had this discussion with planning boards who tell me that the ordinance was put in by the citizens. If you look when they want to change an ordinance in the paper on how the vote goes, it's usually 1,700 citizens in favor of the ordinance change, 200 against. And that's because they vote whatever the planning board suggests they should. Nobody understands zoning or the zoning laws or the ordinances, and they leave it up to the volunteer boards who deal with it time and again to, to make those decisions for them. I don't think the citizens of Nashua had any idea that churches weren't allowed signs, yet alone why churches are even allowed in the residential zone to begin with. They leave it to the people who deal with it every day. As far as the other churches not having permits, I think you would find some of those churches are probably grandfathered and had signs predating the sign ordinance to begin with. And I'm also told by my committee that they checked into our temporary sign and that nonprofits and charities are not, not needing a permit for a temporary sign. So we didn't need a permit, which is why we have one. I think the spirit is there that, that the, the reason for the ordinance is not to have home occupations up and down the street with multiple signs 50 or 100 feet apart. I don't think it came to anybody's attention that there might be one church in the residential zone that's over off to the side that needs a sign. I really don't think it was the intent to deny them a sign. And that's why you're here, it's a hardship for us, we're seeking relief from that ordinance. That is your job. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Cormier? Thank you, Mr. Cormier. Alderman Jettie, you have an opportunity to come if you'd like for five minutes, five minutes of rebuttal.
I'll be briefer than I was before.
If you just watch the clock, it'll count you down.
Okay.
It'll come down to one minute.
All right, thank you.
There'll be a one minute in the red and the orange.
So there was a case, the Hillside Baptist Church in the town of Pembroke that went to the U.S. District Court where Hillside Baptist Church was denied the, a variance to have a, in, in that case, an electronic messaging sign. And it went to the, the District Court, you know, the federal District Court and conquered. And the court said that, that the town's decision to deny the church's request for an electronic sign had nothing to do with either religion or the content of the church's speech. The decision served the town's important governmental interest in aesthetics and traffic safety in a manner that was narrowly tailored to serve those interests. The decision does not unreasonably burden the church's right to practice its religious beliefs, to practice free speech, or to use its property, and that the town has not treated the church differently from any other similarly situated landowner. Secondly, the, the temporary sign is, it's, it's temporary. It's supposed to be for 30 days maximum for special events. This sign has been displayed outside the church since they appeared before you in, in the, the last time in May. That sign has been there with a weekly message, as they described, and, without a permit. Again, I would just ask you to, to, to understand that the, the church, in this case, its request does not meet the standards that have to be met in order to provide a variance. And please, you have to allow the, if, if, if the, if the ordinance should be changed, it should be changed by the alderman, and citizens can petition for a change. But until it's changed, we do not want changeable copy signs in, in residential districts. And I would appreciate your enforcing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Alderman, Jed? Thank you very much for coming. All right, that concludes the public hearing. I will close the public hearing now and open the public meeting. Would you like to start off? Mr. Lionel?
I was not present at the previous meeting, but I have reviewed the application in the minutes, reviewing the minutes. I did not see any discussion about changeable copy sign. It was all about electronic sign. And as far as, we don't enforce the ordinances, that's not our job. So, you know, whether or not various signs elsewhere in the city have permits is not something that, that we, we consider. It's pretty common that churches have changeable copy signs, so much so that there exists a website where you basically can make up your own, what it looks like a photograph of a church sign and with whatever message you want. I think there's more than one of those. So it's actually, to me, a little surprising when I see a church that doesn't have some manner of changeable copy sign. I have no objection to this application, so I, I would support it.
Thank you. Mr. Correa?
In short, I, I, I find support for this application, and I'd like to dig in a little more and contrast it to the electronic sign of which I didn't have support for. I still feel that the electronic sign, which isn't before us tonight, is, is not within the spirit and the intent of the ordinance. I think it's out of character with that portion of the town. And on the other hand, the manual changeable copy, I, I feel is much more in concert with this part of town, you know, which I consider to be what it was when I lived there many years ago, kind of a suburban but rural area, certainly not a DW highway or a Route 101. I think that the sign that's proposed with the manual changing copy is tasteful. I, I don't think it'll impact any prop, the property values of surrounding parcels. I don't think it's contrary to public interest. I think it meets the five criteria. It's interesting that the Immaculate Conception sign came up tonight. You know, I, I happen to live near that, so I go by that facility all the time, and I think that's a great-looking sign. But nonetheless, there's still a temp sign, as I would call it, not unlike the one that St. Joseph uses. If there's a blood drive or something like that, you'll, you'll see that stuck out, you know, for a few days before, you know, and there's some Boy Scout meetings or something and, you know, some craft fairs. So I, I think that, and, and that, to me, is not, you know, upright or out of character with, with my neighborhood, just like I don't think this would be for, for this part of town. And I guess one other, you know, so in summary, with the electronic sign, I didn't feel support for it, for all the reason and rationale that Mr. Jettie brought before us at the last meeting. And for this proposal, I find support for, for all the reason and rationale by, that Mr. Cormier has brought forth before us. I guess one other thing, I mean, the fact that the temp sign that they've used, I think it's probably been used long before the last meeting, it looks pretty weathered, it looks like it's been out there a lot. You know, I, I feel they would still need and want to use that, and kind of have to use that. But if this sign were approved, it, it's gonna, it's gonna be a lot better than what's being there now. And, and I, again, I feel it's, it'll, it'll look tasteful to the, to the neighborhood. So I, you know, I'm probably speaking too long, but I think it meets the five criteria, and I'm in support of it.
Ms. Vitale?
I'm, I'm definitely in support of it. I, I was in support of it the last time. I went back and read the minutes, but believe it or not, in my mind, I thought we had talked about this the last time. And, but evidently, what I thought and what was there were two different things. But I am definitely in support of it. I believe it meets the five criteria. I do know when the zoning, the zoning book came out the last time... I do know when the zoning, the zoning book came out the last time and the discussion on the board was, and there is, you cannot have the zoning laws meet every situation, and hence the reason that we're here on this board. And it was part of that discussion.
Mr. Curry.
I just wanted to add one thing, and thank you for that. In terms about the zoning book, certainly the way it's written is a manual changeable copy is not permitted in the residential zone. If it were so thought of or articulated, well, what about a church in a residential zone? Or what about a large church on a large piece of property? You know, I think, to me, it would be totally reasonable that if we were to expand the book to speak to all these, you know, thousands of different situations, I think it would be likely that a manual changeable copy would be approved. But just for the simplicity and reasonableness, it's residential, no. Anything else, come see us.
Just one thing about that is if you write the zoning book to meet every single situation, you would never be able to read it front to back. So you write it in the fact that it takes care of almost, you know, most things, and then you have a zoning board that you can work on the variances and special exceptions.
So I'll just jump in. And again, I'll echo what Mr. Curry and Mrs. Vitale are talking about. Again, you know, at the beginning of the meeting, I described what a variance was, and a variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. So, you know, obviously, in this residential zone, in the book, in the zoning book here, in this book, and this is why the other, the previous application was advertised as an electronic message center, which we have in front of us. And then there's a second line item here for changeable copy. So this is why I'm looking at this as two separate things. Now, I know that it's very difficult sometimes for people, you know, to, you know, it's change and to accept. But the reason why we're here again is for all these things that kind of fall outside or come in conflict, right, with this, with this book, right, with these specifications. So again, this is why we're here, and this is why we're asked to do what we do, and we take an oath, right, to do this, right? So in my, again, what I'm looking at is, as Mr. Curry stated, for all those reasons, I think that an electronic message center, again, probably, again, in my opinion, what I feel is, again, there was some good reasoning behind the denial of that electronic message center. But in case of the changeable copy, I'm in full support of that. I think, and I believe, that the applicant has thoroughly vetted and has gone through the five points. And I accept those as fact for me to vote in favor for this application. So in with that, again, if we were to move forward, you know, I guess the only special condition I would add is that they don't use that temporary sign anymore, that that gets removed if we go through this. Again, this changeable copy now is on, yes, we approved a larger sign than accepted in that zone. But this is a big piece of property. This is a big structure. I think that we all agree that it fit in nice. So this changeable copy is actually, will be embodied in this sign, so it's not like they're asking for more square footage or there's anything more. And again, I think that it's a reasonable way to send out a message without it being, to some people would, you know, again, could characterize it as offensive or, you know, in-your-face type thing with the electronic message center. I think this is well done. So again, I see it over the city. I see it in our city. I see it in different towns. And again, I don't have privy to whether or not they're permitted or not. I lived near Bishop Gerton. They've got two, one on Lunn Road and one on Almont Street, that they advertise all the time. So, and it's tastefully done, and it's not, you know, offensive to you when you drive by. So I think this is, this is, something's good, and I support it.
I'm also in full support. I concur with my colleagues, and I do believe the applicant has met the five criteria.
Excuse me. I too am in full support. And one of the pictures used, Saint Christopher's Catholic Church is my parish. And in the interest of full disclosure and openness and transparency, I teach religious education at that parish. So for me, the sign, the signs really do trigger you to think. If you, as a parent, go by a school sign and you go, "Oh, yeah, it's picture week," or, "Oh, yeah, here comes up vacation week," you're reminded to pay attention. The Saint Chris will put up during Lent. They have fish dinners. Yes, I'll go back to my bulletin for the phone number, but it reminds me, "Oh, yeah, I can call and I can do that." I think they're very tastefully done. I can't imagine any parish not having the ability to do this or any citizen not being able to go by and read and take advantage of holiday fairs or food drives or dinners because they're open to the public. I think it meets all the criteria. I completely support what Mr. Cormier said. And I guess that means I'm in opposition to the aldermen. And so I find no reason not to support this.
Ms. Vitale.
I think the only thing that you mentioned, Ms. Boucher, that I don't think that we should restrict is you mentioned about the temporary sign, that that would be a condition. But if, as per testimony, they can use a temporary sign because of the type of organization, nonprofit, whatever, I don't think I would add that in. I think the testimony was such is that they would like to get rid of that because of the age that it is during the winter months. It's covered with snow, et cetera. I don't think their intent is to use it. But I wouldn't want to restrict that in case there's something that would come up within the parish that maybe was, you know, a special occasion type of thing, that one of the groups have a sign that gets put out for it. I would hate to restrict that for that, since they're allowed that anyhow because of the group.
Mr., please, I was going to ask for Mr. Fark's opinion from the, on that temporary sign and what your, what the city's or your understanding is of temporary signs. And what, you know, whether or not you know any knowledge about nonprofits, if that really plays.
Well, I was always under the impression that the proposed sign would take the place of the temporary sign that they have out there anyway, and that they would just remove it on their own. I don't really think they need two. The ordinance really only allows you to have, you know, one type of sign like this. So I, I would think that they would want to take that temporary one down. That's what I would think.
So there's nothing really right now in your mind that says that they're not allowed temporary?
They would have two. There's really no need to have two. I think it's, that's going above and beyond what the code really allows.
I have a question in regard to that. Like Mr. Cormier mentioned, the blood drive. If they have something on the four lines on their sign, and they have this other sign that says, "Blood Drive Happening, you know, January first to January 20th," is that what you mean by a temporary sign? Is that what you consider should be restricted? Or is that just a notification somehow of a special event, such as that, or the fish dinner, whatever? Because there are special events that happen outside of what may be listed on those four lines of copy.
I only want to use one example. The Lutheran Church up off of Broad Street, they have their regular sign they have out front, but they also have a preschool there. And when they're doing enrollment, in the past, I've seen their sign put out that they're having their enrollment. It's for a short period of time, but it's separate from their main sign there. And I don't know if they do it that way every year, but I know I've seen it in the past when they're doing enrollment. And I think what we're hearing and, you know, is that their intent is not to have a temporary sign. But I think that if it would show up, it's going to be under that type of situation that is, so. I don't think it's meant to be a copy sign. I think it's meant to be that temporary sign that is like a one-time thing, short term, but...
And I don't want to get hung up on this. I think that, I think the intent is that, obviously, my impression is the same as everybody else's, that we're calling it a temporary sign, but it's, it's going to...
A copy sign.
It's a temporary copy sign. It's been used as the main sign. But now that they have a main sign, you know, a monument sign, then it goes away. I wouldn't want to restrict anything that's allowed for temporary signs in the code, right?
I mean, the code does allow for charitable and public service signs as a permitted type of sign. Generally, most people just have them out for a week or two weeks, thirty days, something like that.
Right, that's what they're...
This one's been out there a little bit longer than that, but there hasn't been any permit or any enforcement action on it. What's before us now is what they want for this changeable copies.
So I guess I would maybe retract what I said. So I guess, listening to Mr. Fark and listening to you, I would be fine with just looking at this case as it is. And if there's an enforcement issue out there, then so be it. Again, I think that this applicant is not looking to find ways around our decision or, you know, or our support for this. I think they're sincere in what they want to do, so I'll retract that. Yes, Mr. Curry.
All right, Dave, you have to make a motion.
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to make a motion. This is for the variance. Again, the owner is a Roman Catholic bishop of Manchester, and it's at seventy-seven, seven seventy, seven seventy-seven West Hollis Street, Saint Joseph the Worker Parish. I make a motion to approve the variance to allow four lines of manually changeable copy in the R nine zone. I believe that this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, which has been a church. And by the testimony tonight, the special conditions of the property being that it's a large building, a large parcel of land on a street that's busy with a fairly high speed limit for an R nine zone. I think the board finds that this variance for the four lines of manually changeable copy is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. I think the board finds there will be no adverse effect to the property values of surrounding parcels. I think the board finds it's not contrary, it's not contrary to public interest to allow this facility, this church, to have the manual changeable copy. And it's substantial justice for the church to allow its, I don't want to say advertising or evangelization, to allow its promotion or the announcements of its activities. So I think substantial justice is served. There was testimony orally about having the sign off at 10:00 PM. I just saw that as a note. I don't remember if that's in this application, so I'd just like to have that as a special condition unless, I'll throw it out. Again, that there be the special condition that the, per testimony of the applicant, that the sign would turn off at 10:00 PM.
And perhaps have a limit on when it goes on?
Well, my expectation, when there's a sign that goes off at 10:00 PM, is that it would not come back on before daylight. I don't know if we have to put a time on that, but that's, so...
Yeah, I think when a sign goes off, it's not going to come on till the next evening. I mean, that's pretty...
Well, typically, you know.
I don't mind quantifying it from 10:00 PM for the rest of the night.
Didn't it say 6:00 AM somewhere? I thought, I thought somewhere in the minutes that I saw like a 6:00 AM time.
I think that might have been when they were having electronic messaging, or you're looking at the previous minutes?
Oh, yeah.
I think what was going to happen there was, we were talking, discussing the time, so...
I'd prefer to quantify that than, I appreciate Mr. Lionel asking to quantify that. And I would say that it turns off at 10:00 PM and is off for the duration of darkness.
On at dusk and off at 10:00 PM.
Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Ms...
McKay.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was thinking of something else. And so any discussion now on this motion? Okay, again, Mrs. Vitale, are we voting on this case? All in favor of this?
Are we including the dusk to 10:00 PM condition?
10:00 PM, yeah, dusk to 10:00 PM is when the light is on.
That was your, that was your special condition.
Why I had worded it as from 10:00 PM for the remainder of darkness, you know, through the night.
That it would be off.
That it would be off.
Okay.
Again, what I guess what it is, and again, I'm not going to, if for some reason they have something to automatic, something that goes on, it may sense, in different times of the year, it may sense when to come on, so it won't be a time thing. It'll be when it starts getting dark, it may come on. It may have something that says, "Hey, shut off at 10 o'clock automatically, no matter what time of the year it is." So maybe in certain times of the year, it may come on later. The lights may come on later at night, then.
That's why I said dusk, because, yeah, they usually do have some sort of sensor.
But again, if somebody's doing it manually, or I don't know. I, so, yeah, so dusk.
I wrote dusk.
So before we move on, I would just want to make sure everybody's happy, or, not happy, we're considering.
What is the wording that you have?
For this special condition, the sign lights go out at 10:00 PM and on at dusk.
Ms. Vitale.
You would turn the lights off at 10:00 PM at night, and you could turn them back on in the morning. Am I giving, am I thinking there's something wrong? So if you're going to have an illuminated sign, and you don't want to bother the neighbors, would you not turn them off at a certain time in the night back on?
They're typically not on during the day.
Yeah, they're not on in the day. No, you wouldn't, but you would, you do have dark days where the lights, you know, like it rains during the day, that type of stuff, that you would have them on. My thought would be, you know, if you, it's okay. I'm just, it doesn't really bother me one way or the other. I just, yeah, I think having a time, why the dusk? Are you this...
That's typically when illuminated signs turn on.
So they would go on and off depending on how dark it is?
Yeah, that's usually what happens.
And you would keep this, have them on all night then, if they wanted to?
Well, they would shut off at 10:00 PM because that's the condition we have.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I think you'll find that most illuminated signs operate in that fashion.
Okay, that's fine. I never even thought about it that way, so I always, time period.
Mr. Curry made a motion with a special condition. Being the maker of the motion, he has to affirm whether or not he's accepting that change or not. So do you want Ms. McKay to reread that motion?
Well, I think Ms. McKay was clear that what she has is the light goes off at 10:00 and comes on at dusk the following day. I mean, from, from listening to our conversation, I feel more inclined to say what I thought initially, which it's off at 10:00 PM. I think we're all clear on that. And perhaps, you know, and to remain off for the duration of darkness, which I think every, I would think that we could all agree, which is the nighttime. And so if it was the next morning and it's a real dark day, that's okay to have the light on.
Okay.
And so if we worded it again, that the light goes off at 10:00 and is to remain off for the duration of nightfall, I think that would be able, I think...
Okay, so that, that will be, that's your motion, and that's where you stand. So where, so the second was by Ms. McKay. Still second that, Ms. McKay?
Yes, I do.
Just want to make sure. So now what we're going to vote on is Mr. Curry's, and again, you're voting on Mr. Curry's motion. And again, you can vote either way, but that's what we'll vote on now. Um, and again, you can vote either way, um, but that's what we'll vote on now. If that were to fail, then we would maybe make another motion for a different way, but let's vote on this motion, uh, stated by Mr. Curry. So, all in favor of Mr. Curry's motion? Okay, that's five to nothing. That passes. All right. You got through that. Great. So, um, with that, congratulations. Your application's approved. Don't forget, there's a thirty-day window of appeal. Other than that, good luck. With that, I'll close, um, the public meeting for case number one and open the public hearing for case number two. Welcome. Case number two is the Evans Family Revocable Trust. Applicant is Stephen Evans. The address is forty-two McKenna Drive. The description is Evans Family Revocable Trust. Owner, Stephen Evans. Applicant, forty-two McKenna Drive. Sheet C, Lot seventeen ninety-one, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section one ninety dash sixteen, Table sixteen dash three, to encroach up to five feet into the ten-foot required left side yard setback to construct and attach nineteen-by-thirty-foot one-car garage with room buds, room above. It's in Ward five. It's in the zoning district R nine. Name and address, please?
Good evening. Stephen Evans, forty-two McKenna Drive.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You wanna walk us through what you want to do?
I'll do my best. Haven't done this before, so...
No problems. We'll help you out.
Um, I assume I'm just gonna go through the five points here. Do I have to state again what the addition, what the variance is for, or...
Yeah, so just tell us what you're, what you're building, what you're doing.
Looking to just put an addition to the left side of the property, construct, um, a one-car garage with a bedroom above it. We also do have a shed that's in that area that we would remove, so it would not only be just a garage, but the back half of it we would use as, also use as storage. Um, so, with having to do that, to design it, would have to encroach just under five feet into the ten-foot setback, so... Granted, the qua-, the request variance will not be contrary to the public interest. There'll be no conflict with the neighborhood. I don't think it's gonna cause any harm to anybody. The proposed use will observe the spirit of the ordinance. Majority of the houses in the neighborhood, about eighty percent of them already have garages. I think it would just fit in just fine. Substantial justice would be done to the property owner by granting the variance, which will allow us to do that. We've lived in the house for nineteen years. It's something we've talked about for a long time and doing, and we'd like the opportunity to do that. The pro-, proposed use will not diminish the values of the surrounding properties. It's only gonna increase our property value, and by doing that, would probably potentially increase some of the surrounding property values based upon the comps, so... And the special condition exists such the literal enforcement of the ordinance results in unnecessary hardship. I mean, we've been there, like I said, for nineteen years. Would like to be able to put the addition on, make it a little easier for my wife dealing with the New England weather, not having to deal with the snow and rain. I do, we do have the ability to move, um, but I do have an in-law addition on with my mother that lives there. She's eighty-nine years old. She does have some health issues. Um, she has the onset of Alzheimer's or dementia, so it's not really recommended. She's, knows what she knows, and trying to introduce her into a new environment is not recommended, so... But just having the garage would make it a little nicer living there, so...
Yep. And, and I think that, um, also, I think that in some respects, in, in a minor way, the special condition can also be that you have an irregular-shaped lot, so it's not square. It's kind of like in a pie shape, right?
Yeah, we, we narrow out as we go to the back.
Right, so it looks like you have like fifty-five feet in the back, and then you get some larger frontage, but it's definitely, um... So, if the property, again, was a square piece of property, you probably wouldn't be in front of us right now.
No.
So, okay. Um, and again, your drawing, um, you get great drawings, by the way. That's very detailed, and, uh, we really appreciate that. And, and again, for those who don't see the drawing, the, you know, the incursion is, because of there's an angle, the rear of the garage is coming out into the setback, but the front corner of the garage is just within the setback, so... So, there's like a little piece of triangle there that you're incurbing, right? Correct?
Yeah, it kind of, Joe, it goes back, and then we jog it in, so we're not encroaching too far in, and then...
Right, okay. Any questions? Okay, we don't have any questions, I guess. Thank you. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in, uh, favor of this application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition with this application? Okay, seeing none. I will close the public meeting, uh, a public hearing, open the public meeting. In this case, Ms. Boras will be voting, but we'll all be participating. Ms. Vitale's got her hand up.
Yeah, um, I think it was a pretty thorough application, um, because of the shape of the lot. Really toward the one end, there's not that much of an incursion, and, you know, it's just, it's truly because of the shape of the lot that they're, uh, falling within the setback on that, uh, back part of the property.
Mr. Curry?
Um, I find support for the application. A couple things, just as Ms. Vitale said, you know, and as you had mentioned, in the front of the house, on, on the front, uh, foundation, that's, that actually, I think, would, is right on the line. That would kind of be within the envelope. Here, regular lot, you know, results in an incursion if you build back from that. So, I appreciate how, uh, Mr. Evans kicks over that wall of that side of the garage to minimize the setback incursion. These detailed plans are, are really good to have, because you know what you're gonna get. So many times, we get a stick figure, and it ends up, for whatever reason, not being what, you know, maybe we expect, and it, you know... But this, I think, is well thought out. For example, also the garage door in the back. Obviously, if they need to get something into the backyard, they've thought that through. And then one other thing, you know, in sightwalking this property, there is like a downhill, you know, a topography change, and one of the concerns from this application was, wow, you know, it's a two-story. There's one thing to have a one-story garage in the left side yard setback, but with the, the bedroom above, I was afraid it might really impose on the abutter. But because, you know, it, it goes down, it works in the other direction. I think there's, if it was the other way, I, I think this would cast an afternoon shadow, you know, most of the all-afternoon onto the abutter, but it would work, as I would say, to the Evans' favor to be downhill here. So, I find support for, uh, I think it meets the criteria, and, uh, I'm good with it.
Mr. Lionel?
Uh, I'm also in support, uh, for it. The only thing I, I'll note is that the side that, that Mr. Evans wants to expand on is adjacent to the driveway and garage of his neighbor, so it's unlikely that there would be any, uh, reasonable interference there.
Um, I'm also in favor of the application, um, again, for everything that was stated. Ms. Boras?
I'm also in support.
Ms. McKay?
I too am in support, and, um, I think it meets all the criteria. I also am sympathetic to his mom, living with him and with early onset dementia. And her surroundings being familiar for as long as possible is, um, commendable.
Okay, anybody like to make a motion?
I'm not voting on this one.
Oh, that's right. I know, I thought you were, look at me.
Oh, I was actually, I was just gonna point out, while you're mentioning it, is that, um, it does, uh, a nice thing that's gonna make the whole property tighter, is that they're removing the existing shed, too.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lionel.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Evans Family Revocable Trust. Applicant is Stephen Evans. Address is forty-two McKenna Drive. Sheet C, Lot seventeen ninety-one, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section one ninety sixteen, Table sixteen dash three, to encroach up to five feet into the ten-foot required left side yard setback to construct and attach nineteen-foot by thirty-foot one-car garage with room above. This is in, uh, Ward five, District R nine. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. As we've noted, the property is, um, in irregular shape, a sort of a, a trapezoid shape, with it's narrow in the back and the lot line's slant in. Uh, the benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by any other reasonable method other than an area variance. We believe that this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It is similar in design and, uh, to other houses in the neighborhood, so we believe that it will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. We see no evidence that it's contrary to the public interest, and we believe that substantial justice to the applicant would be served. So, I make a motion to approve this variance.
Seconding?
Ms. Boras.
I'm sorry to say, Ms. Boras, seconding it? Any discussion? All in favor of this application? That's five to nothing. Congratulations. Your application's approved. Just be aware that there's a thirty-day window of appeal, but other than that, um, you're all set. All right, thank you for coming. With that, I'll close, uh, the public meeting for case number two and open the public hearing for case number three. Case number three is owner Chris and Deborah Bartol, thirty-eight Durham Street. Description is Chris M. and Deborah K. Bartol, owners, thirty-eight Durham Street, Sheet F, Lot seven forty-nine, requesting the following. One, special exception from Land Use Code Section one ninety dash fifteen, Table fifteen dash one, number three, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit. And two, a variance from Land Use Code Section one ninety dash sixteen, Table sixteen dash three, to encroach up to twenty-one feet into the thirty-foot required rear yard setback to construct a twenty-four-by-thirty-foot accessory dwelling unit. It's in Ward one, and it's in the R nine zoning district. Welcome. Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Chris Bartol. I live at thirty-eight Durham Street, Nashua, New Hampshire.
I'm Andy Erickson. I'm just assisting him with the variance.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, so what we are looking to do is to, um, move my wife's mother from Pennsylvania, where she resides alone, to, uh, live with us. We would like to build a, um, basically a separate dwelling unit for her that would be attached to the rear of our garage. She just recently turned seventy, and we would rather her be close to family. My, my wife and her brother, my wife's brother also live in town. So, we would like to be able to bring her in and live with family rather than trying to find housing on her own.
Would you like me to read some of the bullets here?
Uh, go ahead, and you're, you have, you have fifteen minutes of testimony, so go ahead.
So, we're gonna, applying to add an accessory dwelling.
Excuse me. Can you just try to speak into the mic, just so we can catch it, please? Thank you.
Uh, we want to add an accessory dwelling off the rear of the home, which will have its own bathroom, kitchen, bedroom, living room, and four-season porch. It will be a total of five hundred and thirty square feet. In the surrounding neighborhood, the other homes, um, their square footage is ranged in different areas, but once the addition, if it gets approved and built, it will be roughly the same as the rest of them. Uh, there's one that's three thousand square feet. There's one that's one thousand eight hundred and seventy square feet, and two thousand seventy-six square, oh, and, yeah, and theirs will be two thousand one hundred and ninety-six square feet if it's completed. It shouldn't affect any surrounding traffic congestion or pedestrian traffic, because she's only one person with one car being added. And then, the proposed structure will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, because it will be built off the rear of the home, which it abuts an open space, Lot seven thirty-seven. Furthermore, an in-law apartment is typical in the neighborhood. Nor will this variance threaten public health, safety, or welfare in any way. It is simply an addition to have Mr. Bartol's mother-in-law move in to be with family. The proposed structure will observe the spirit of the ordinance, since it is unobtrusive and will be used for residential purposes. The proposed structure is designed to look as part of the original home, and it will not impact neighbors, because from the street, you will not be able to see any major changes, and there are no neighbors in the rear of this residence, residential lot, sorry. This will help Mr. Bartol's family with the primary purpose to have, uh, his elderly mother-in-law, Nancy Keim, who is currently has, in Myersdale, Pennsylvania, be able to move to Nashua and live with her family. Currently, there is nothing wrong with the existing site if we do not have the need for the mother-in-law to move in out of her existing home and into our home. In order to give her a safe home of her own with twenty-four-hour assistance if needed, she needs, is the reason for the variance is needed. The existing building setbacks does not allow for the building area large enough to give her a place she can call home. If we could all get approved of the variance, it would harm our family immensely. Would be a financial strain to have my mother-in-law move to assist, a assisted living facility. It would cause great physical and emotional pain for her to move from her existing home to a facility instead of being with her family.
That's it. All right, thank you. Um, for, Mr. Lionel?
Questions? Are we...
Yeah, I was gonna...
Are we ready for questions?
Yes. I was gonna ask first whether or not they're familiar with the, um, before we start.
Oh, yes. Go ahead.
Are you familiar with the accessory dwelling unit, uh, special conditions?
Yeah, I have the paper on it.
Okay, so, so... So, Mr. Bartol, um, have you, have you looked over this?
Uh, very briefly today.
Excuse me?
Very briefly.
Very briefly, okay. So, I think what we'll do is we'll just quickly go down there, because we need your affirmation, and we have to make sure that all these points are taken care of. So, um, number one is accessory dwelling unit shall be clearly incidental support in extent, use, and purpose of primary structure. It does not exceed seven hundred squi-, seventy, seven hundred, seven hundred fifty square feet. Again, less than that, so you affirm that, correct?
Yes.
The accessory dwelling unit shall, shall be the only accessory dwelling unit within or on the same lot as a single-family dwelling unit?
Yes.
The accessory dwelling unit shall not alter the single-family character or appearance of the single-family dwelling unit or its conformity with the character of the neighborhood. So, no, so again, there's three, three items underneath that. No new entrance or exit to accessory dwelling unit shall be constructed on the front or front-end side of a single-family dwelling unit. No new curb cut from the street shall be constructed, and the exterior design of the accessory dwelling unit shall be compatible with the single-family dwelling through architectural use of building form, scale, and construction materials. Okay? Uh, the owner of the property shall provide the city of Nashua a covenant filing with the Hill's Recounting Registered Deeds, along with appropriate filing fees, fees, and then there's the verbiage for the covenant. So, do you agree to, to file that covenant? Uh, additional off-street parking space, one additional parking space is required above the minimum standard for a single-family house. I believe you have plenty of parking.
Yes.
An interior door shall provide, be provided between the primary dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit.
Yes, it will.
A single-family dwelling and accessory dwelling unit shall not be separated in ownership, including by condominium ownership.
It will not, no.
Accessory dwelling units should only be associated with single-family detached dwellings. They shall not be associated with manufactured housing as defined in RSA six seventy-four thirty-one. Thank you. You just have to get through that. Mr. Lionel?
Um, I'm a little bit confused by the request where it says, encroach up to twenty-one feet into the thirty-foot required rear yard setback. And looking at the diagram, um, if I read this literally, there would be nine feet between the, uh, the lot line and the back of this additional, uh, construction. Is that right?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so, this diagram actually is not, not to scale, and the, yeah, it would be a lot closer. Okay. It just didn't seem consistent to me. That's, that's all, my only question.
Mr. Curry?
Uh, you have a question for the applicant. Currently, on the back of what I think...
Currently, on the back of what I think is a garage, it looks like there's perhaps a three-season room?
Yes, there's a four-season porch.
And it, you know, this looks like there's, like saucer tubes or something, and so with this proposal, is this gonna get basically taken down and a foundation's gonna get poured?
Correct. Yeah, the existing, the existing four-season porch will be removed, and then from the back of the existing garage will be where the addition, new addition starts on a foundation.
Okay, got it. And then, I guess, like, this is a picture of the, the new, so there'd be a foundation with this proposed, with the new structure on top of it, and would there be a deck on saucer tubes behind that?
No, the deck would be to the side, to the east side.
If you're looking at it from the rear, it'll go to the right, where the, there's an existing deck there now.
Uh-huh.
So it's just, the one that's there's obviously gonna have to get removed for construction, and then a new one will be built ten feet over from where it was, but in the same character as it is.
Okay. So then, the back of the proposed addition would, would be, that would end with the foundation?
Yes.
And that saying is, is nine feet from the back property line?
I don't have the plot plan with me, but it is...
Because I was confused, like Mr. Lionel, with this photograph here, this is where...
That, the one that they, that one from the city is wrong. They went by the one, the aerial picture of the, on their website?
Uh-huh.
And that shows the existing footprint different than what they originally had filed.
Uh-huh.
So from the back of the home now, I believe there's like forty-three feet to the property line.
Okay.
And we're going out twenty-four feet, but the setback from the property line is thirty feet, which makes it only, whatever's left there, the, so forty, twenty, it's like eighteen feet to the property line, but we're going over the setback.
Okay. And then the other question I had is that lot, the, the open lot behind you, is that, was that when this neighborhood was built, that was deeded as just to remain undisturbed?
Yes, it's common land shared by all the neighbors.
It looks kind of wooded. Can you walk there, or is it just built up?
Our kids would walk back there and play, yes.
Uh-huh, okay.
But it is wooded.
Okay, all right.
No fields or nothing, like, it's just woods.
Okay. That's all I have.
Ms. Vitale?
Was this a cluster-built neighborhood? So they made the, the lots smaller so you could have the open land?
I don't know the details of that. I believe it was, but...
Mr. Falk, did you know if this was a...
I don't think it is because the lot would meet, it's a R nine zoning district, and the lot really meets the R nine criteria. Otherwise, it would be an R eighteen lot developed with R nine, R nine criteria, so I think it's, it's all okay.
And...
The current setbacks, really.
And I was trying to find the exact thing. What's the, how deep is your existing, the sunroom back there?
Existing, it's ten feet, twelve feet from the house.
So it's twelve feet, so you're going in another, another twelve past that? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, you're all set for now.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will read into the record, I have a letter of support here, to the zoning board of adjustment, City of Nashua, to whom may concern, as neighbors of Chris M. and Deborah K. Bartol, owners of thirty-eight Durham Street, we are aware of and endorse the owner's requests and desire for the following. One, for special exception, allow an in-law apartment dwelling unit. And, two, variance to encroach up to twenty-one feet into the required thirty-four, thirty-foot rear yard setback in order to construct said in-law apartment, apartment as a twenty-four by thirty-foot dwelling unit. As such, the in-law apartment would be constructed as a single-story self-sufficient dwelling, attached to the rear of the existing garage on the owner's home. It is signed by, and I'll do the best I can, Robin, excuse me? Yeah, I'll read the addresses. The owners of these addresses are four, forty Durham Street, thirty-three Durham Street, thirty-one Durham Street, and thirty-six Durham Street, dated from ten fourteen to ten twenty eighteen. So that is in the record. Is anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Ms. Vitale?
Normally, you know, it's a pretty substantial incursion into the, the back setback, but I, I know this area really well, and it is open land behind it. I don't think it's out of character with the neighborhood. I believe it, it meets the needs of the family, and we have support from the neighbors. So I'm, I'm supportive of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Currie?
You know, when I first got the request, it seemed like a, a big incursion, as Ms. Vitale was saying, into the backyard, but when I viewed the site, I'm like, geez, you know, you wouldn't even know it's there, except for the butters, you know? So I was, I would be sensitive to that because I think it, from, if, I, I don't know if the butters can see how much of it, because I don't know. You know, they know, I don't. But if there was concern, that would be important to me because I, I think you could easily say it doesn't meet, you know, like, the single-family home, and it's kind of a big thing on the back, but, you know, the butters are in support of it, and I think it's pretty well thought out. It is sticking out on the back a bit, but I don't think you're gonna see it from the street, and it lets these folks accomplish what they want to do, which is have their, their mother move in. So I'm, you know, I'm supportive of it as it is.
I'm also in support of it. I, I think, especially, again, with the unique situation of the home and the open land of the budding property, I think, again, it, the impact is really maybe to one or two neighbors, which there is a lot of support for this with the surrounding neighbors. And, and again, again, no impact to anybody in the rear because it has a large, very large piece of common wooded land. So again, like Mr. Currie said, I, unless you know it's there, I don't think you're gonna see it. So I support this application as it stands. Anyone else?
I'm in support.
Okay.
I'm in support.
Mr. Lionel, what's up?
Yep, I'm in support.
Okay. Anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Currie?
Is this, excuse me? Is this on the special exception or the variance?
I think I'll go with the special exception first.
Thank you.
And again, Ms. Vitale's voting on this case.
So I'm making a motion on behalf of Chris and Deborah Bartol, thirty-eight Durham Street. I'm making a motion for the request of a special exception to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit. Per testimony this evening, the criteria for a special exception, accessory dwelling unit, the nine criteria by testimony is met by the applicant. It is listed in the table of uses. I think the board finds that this one additional unit will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety, nor will it overload public water, drainage, sewer, or any other municipal system. Again, the special regulations are fulfilled. I think the board finds that this rather, this, the, the proposed building on the back of the house will not impair the integrity or be out of the character of the neighborhood, especially with the special condition that there's a special situation, you might say that there is a common unoccupied land behind it, behind the house. So I think it meets the criteria of a special exception, and I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Seconded by Mrs. McKay. Any discussion? All in favor? That's five to nothing.
And I'm also making a motion on the variance, flip two pages here, on the variance, to encroach up to twenty-one feet into the thirty-foot required rear yard setback, and that's to construct the accessory dwelling unit. I believe the, I think this board believes the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, which is to add essentially a one-story unit, accessory dwelling unit on the back of the house. Tucked away in the back of the house, I think it's in summary to say, in that situation, I think the board finds that this incursion is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. I think the board finds it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels, nor is it contrary to public, it's not contrary to public interest, and that substantial justice is served to allow this variance in the rear yard setback. So I make a motion to approve as presented.
And that's seconded.
Ms. McKay, second. Any discussion? All in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, the motion passes. Just be aware, again, third-day window of appeal. Other than that, you're all set. I will close now the, the public meeting for case number three, and I'd like to take a five-minute break.
Hey, Carter? Did the, did the board get the email that came in today? And Kate, board attorney?
I have copies.
It's, uh... Better safe than sorry, right?
Okay, we'll come back to order. I'd like to open the public hearing for case number four. The owner is Two sixty-seven Main Street Realty LLC, address is Two sixty-seven Main Street. Description is Two sixty-seven Main Street Realty LLC, owner, Two sixty-seven Main Street, Sheet ninety-seven, Lot thirteen, requesting the following. Use variance from Land Use Code, Section one ninety dash fifteen, Table fifteen dash one, number one thirteen, to allow a restaurant with a drive-through facility. And, two, a variance from Land Use Code, Section one ninety dash sixteen, Table sixteen dash three, to exceed maximum front yard setback from Main Street. Ten feet maximum allowed, thirteen feet proposed. And, three, variance from Land Use Code, Section one ninety dash sixteen, Table sixteen dash three, to exceed maximum front yard setback from Prospect Avenue. Ten feet maximum allowed, thirty-eight feet proposed, toward four. Zoning district is D one MU. So, welcome. Name and address.
Mister Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman. I'm an attorney with Prunear and Pearlman, here in Nashua, on behalf of your applicant, Two sixty-seven Main Street Realty Limited Liability Company, and I can report that it's zero-zero at this point, Your Honor. With me tonight are Joe and Rick Carvallo, owners of the LLC that owns this site on Main Street, Chad Brandon from Fieldstone Land Consultant, and Giles Hamm from Vinesse and Associates. And what I'm gonna do, Mister Chairman, if it's okay with the board, is I'm gonna do my initial presentation. I'm gonna ask Mr. Hamm to come up and speak to the traffic study that Vinesse and Associates did for this site, and then I'll come back and run through my variance criteria. If I may, I'd like to introduce Joe and Rick to the board. Joe and Rick Carvallo are local Dunkin' Donuts owners. When I mean by that, they're not distant corporate franchisees. They live here in town and in Hollis. They own the Dunkin' Donuts on Canal Street. They own the Dunkin' Donuts on East Hall Street. They own, own the Dunkin' Donuts in the Seminole Plaza, three hundred, whatever that is, three hundred main. And there's a Dunkin' Donuts in the Shaws, in the Seminole Plaza. So these folks are very local, they're hands-on, you will find them in one of their stores at any given time, and so they, they have a vested interest in making the site, site work for Nashua. The site that we're working on is the old, what I call the Gibbs Gas Station. I don't live in Nashua anymore, but I did for many, many years, and I would take my parents' car to go to the Gibbs Gas Station, fill up, at a time where the, where the gas tank was behind the license plate. Rick Carvallo, our young friend over here, he doesn't know what that is, those old, old gas tanks, but it's been dormant for many, many years. It's been a dead site, just growing, and the, what's there is slowly fading away. It's dilapidated, there are sheds in the back, and you see, we have a picture up of what you see. I think we're all familiar with the site. The site has had some attempts to come back to life over the years, most notably in two thousand and one. Joe Carvallo was here for a Dunkin' Donuts site, which did get approved. It was approved under the prior code, is approved as a special exception. That deal never came together, and the, and the project never went forward, but for a very similar layout that we're presenting tonight, this, this board approved a plan, again, as a special exception and not the variance we're requesting tonight. The board should know that we have had a number of staff meetings about this site, and we have made changes and modifications to initial plans to accommodate concerns coming from all staff departments. We, for example, just to go over some of the site features, we have a long stacking lane to accommodate the drive-through. We have two hundred and sixty feet, where a hundred and, hundred and sixty feet are required for a stacking lane. We are eliminating curb cuts along Main Street. The curb... The curb cuts were challenging, taking a left out of the site from the old gas station. We're eliminating those curb cuts. We are adding one right-turn-only curb cut coming out on Main Street as an escape lane, but I think all traffic folks would appreciate eliminating those one after another curb cuts coming south on Main Street. We are proposing a small restaurant, 1,875 square feet, 13 or 14 seats. It's not a lot of seats in the facility. It's mostly designed for the operation of the Dunkin' Donuts and the drive-through facility. We are mindful of some of the concerns that staff raised about the look and feel of Main Street, so we have a second floor added, you know, not unlike the Walgreens and the CVS that have a kind of a faux second floor. The second floor is actually just going to be used for storage. The Carvallos do intend to use it, not for any rental purposes, not for any additional uses, like an office space or anything, it's just their own storage, but we'll have that second-story look. The staff suggested having some type of fencing along the front to screen the drive-through as much as possible, and we looked at a number of different designs. We had a hard wall there, a hard brick wall, we had other solid walls, and for security reasons, we didn't like that, so we thought the wrought iron fence approach would look the best, do the job of screening. There'll be some landscaping right along, in between the sidewalk and along the wrought iron fence as well. So we think that accomplishes that goal of trying to screen as much as possible, the drive-through. The parking is in the rear of the proposed building. Again, that comes right out of the D1 guidelines to have this as pedestrian-friendly as possible, and so the parking is in the back. We're relocating the sidewalk, we're making the sidewalk perpendicular, coming across Prospect Street to Prospect Ave. Right now, it's kind of a strange kitty corner, and that had to do with where the curb cuts were coming out of the gas station, so we're going to be relocating that. And that leads right to the front door of the site. Again, we expect, we're hopeful for some hospital walk-in traffic. As I stated in our application, we have typical Dunkin' Donuts hours, we have 20 employees employed over the course of a day. AM peak is always the highest use of the restaurant. We have deliveries coming primarily by box truck, they'll be coming off-hours, they won't be coming peak hours, and we can coordinate that with Dunkin' Corporate. And so that is the site overview for what we're trying to do. There is a change right off the bat that we have to the plan, and Carter called it out to me either yesterday or today. The dumpster is too close to the property line, we have to pull the dumpster off of the property line, and that will be done as we go through this process. The neighbors have all been contacted, I talked to all of our neighbors. You have a letter from the Magrela Realty Trust. You may know the trustee of the Magrela Realty Trust, has been before you a few times, but the Magrela Realty Trust, Gerald Prunier, trustee, has a letter in support. And just today, unexpectedly, I received an email from the Maynard family, the Pong Maynard owns two of the properties on Prospect Ave. And again, these two neighbors are in support. These two neighbors represent four lots and four residential lots that surround the site. I have talked with Scott Cody of the hospital, I spoke with Todd Whitney, who is here tonight. He, the Whitney family owns the office building across Main Street. Mr. Carpenter, our residential neighbor to the back, we had a good talk last week, and he is here as well. And I can't, again, what I told Carter is, you know, I don't have unanimous support, but everyone knows what we're doing, which is the, kind of the right way to approach these applications. With that, Mr. Chairman, that's my introduction. I would like to have Mr. Hamm come up, explain what Vinessa did for their traffic study, then I'll come back, I'll come back to the board. That's okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Giles Hamm, managing principal with Vinessa and Associates. And we've done a very detailed traffic study for this project, and we've done it in accordance with city and state standards, your typical traffic study. When I look at a Dunkin' Donuts like, site like this, I'm interested in a couple of things. Is it safe? And is the queue storage adequate? So those are really the criteria I look at when I do a comprehensive study for this type of use. The critical study period, obviously, is the morning peak hour. There's about 184 vehicle trips that are estimated for this project. As you've heard, there's Dunkin' Donuts in the vicinity of this corridor, so there's nearby Dunkin' Donuts. Typically, a Dunkin' Donuts is going to get about 80% of its traffic from traffic already on Main Street. So while it adds turning traffic, it doesn't add a lot of new traffic to the area it's using, which we call pass-by trips. The site access and egresses through the signalized intersection at Prospect Street, that intersection currently operates very well. We expect in the, with the future analysis, that it will still operate at Level Service B or better. So it'll operate safely, it'll operate with small delays, and it will not cause any congestion in the area. There's also a little slip lane from the drive-through lane, which will be right-turn-out-only, that'll be signed for no left turns, it'll have a stop sign, no-left-turn sign, and then it'll have do-not-enter signs facing Main Street to enforce it's an exit-only, it's a right-turn exit-only. And overall, the site, as laid out, is safe. It conforms to industry practices and standards. The next step really is, how does the drive-through operate? How is that queue storage? I've worked on several Dunkin' Donuts sites, I've represented communities looking at these sites, and I've represented proponents. We went out and looked at the Dunkin' Donuts at 38 Broad Street to look at the queues that were there. The maximum queue we saw there, which only occurred for a matter of a few seconds, was 13 vehicles. Most of the time, it was well less than that. This site, as laid out, will accommodate a maximum of 13 vehicles, which would extend to Prospect Avenue. And it's adequate for the proposed use. So in summary, we've done a very detailed analysis. The project is safe, it will not cause congestion, and there's adequate queue storage for the proposed use. Thank you.
Mr. Curry.
I was just wondering, I didn't look at it from this angle, but coming out from Prospect Avenue, is that signalized also?
No. So, if I can see it all here, this is Main Street, this is the signal here that controls these four legs. It comes out here at an unsignalized location, it's unsignalized there.
What about Prospect Avenue to Main Street?
That's signalized today.
And is that green when Prospect Street is green, or because of that offset, are they two different greens?
So, a couple of things. The way that signal works, first of all, there's an exclusive pedestrian phase, so pedestrians, when pedestrians walk, it stops all the traffic. We did note when we were out there earlier in the year that there was a, the push button wasn't, one of the push buttons wasn't working correctly, so we would propose to fix that, make sure it's working properly. The phasing itself is, there's a southbound advance to allow the left turn to Prospect Street in through traffic, then the through traffic goes together in left turns, and then the third phase is the two side streets go together. Now, I've been out there several times during the morning and afternoon periods, there is a very slight offset to the intersection, and if you sit there and watch traffic, you'll see that it's not a problem. The left turns work nicely, the offset actually helps the left turns, there's more room, so that's very, very simple. And then the side streets just do your normal yield, if you're turning, if you're turning left, you're going to yield to the right turn, et cetera, and it works, it works quite well.
Thank you.
So, going north on Main Street, which is, right now, being out there, observing traffic, you wouldn't be able to observe that because there's no viable business there in that corner. So talk to me about going north on Main Street, you're going to have traffic that's going to want to take a left onto Prospect Street, obviously to go to Dunkin' Donuts. How does that play out with, you know, you've got oncoming traffic going south, it can be heavy at times, but you're the expert, but, you know, again, we all live in the city of Nashville, and we all drive Main Street at some time or another. So, how is that going to work, again, with, are you proposing that there's some type of a green arrow that's going to happen on that left lane, or what's, how's that going to work? How do you envision that working?
Sure. So what you have today, let's talk about the morning period. So coming southbound and turning left, there's 185 turns there today. Southbound through, there's about 490 turns, and obviously, the northbound left is very minor, and the northbound through is about 390 cars. So what happens today effectively is, southbound, that center lane is used for mostly the turns, even though it's a through-left-turn lane, it's mostly for the left turns, and you have the through lane. So in the morning, you're going to have probably 40 to 50 cars that are in this left-turn lane turning in, but there's more than enough capacity for the through cars to move only in the right-turn lane, if they only use the right-turn lane, but they'll also use that turn lane at times. So, and the level of that left-turn volume, there'll be sufficient gaps in the stream for them to turn in, and also during the yellow time, they'll be able to turn in as well. So, we believe, and the analysis shows that the left turns can be processed through the intersection. The intersection operates at a very high Level Service, Level Service B, and, you know, probably in this community, we have a lot of Fs here, so the signal works well, and if you go out there and watch it during the peak periods, it works very well, and it will continue to work well. It'll have a slight increase in delay because of this project, but quite frankly, when anything gets developed on the property, it's going to add traffic and increase some delays slightly, but there's plenty of capacity to accommodate this proposal.
Do you have any concerns on the width of the, that short-legged Prospect Avenue, as far as the width goes, you know, because it's narrower, obviously, than, than across the street or any other roads? And I thought I read something in there that, did you make some recommendation that you believe that the street should be 24 feet wide, or that would be the best, or?
No, so what we talked about is that our driveway would be, would be 24 feet wide. The approach coming out is about, is about a 12-foot travel lane?
Right.
And that's typical. I mean, a, a, a road on a highway is 12, a lane on a highway is 12 feet, so it doesn't really have any shoulders there, but it's adequate for the level of traffic that's going to, going to be using it with this project.
So, really what the unknown is, right, is coming out of that site onto Prospect Ave is, really don't know how much traffic is going to go, straight across, take a left, or want to take a right? And so, one of the other things I was thinking of or looking at is, you know, again, just surmising here, right, I don't, I only know. If there are people that want to take a right onto Main Street, there isn't really an option right now to take a right, they'd have to wait for any traffic that's queued in front of them, right, coming out of the parking lot.
So, with the level of traffic that's coming out, and will come out of Prospect Avenue, one lane is appropriate. There's no need to have two lanes with the level of traffic that's coming out of this site.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Lineal?
I'm just, this slip lane, I'm, you know, looking at it, the only way you could, is it for people who decide they don't want to go through the drive-through completely?
Really, that, to be honest with you, that's really a requirement of the tenant, who likes to be able to have, if someone is in the drive-through and whatever, I decided I want my donut or whatever, I got to go to work, they can slip out and go onto the roadway without going through the, through the drive-through. But it's not of, in terms of traffic and operations, it's not any really desire that, you know, that I would require, it's something that the tenant likes to have, and they do.
It looks like you can't get there from the parking lot.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
The, that escape lane, and again, it's not a question, really, it's just kind of a comment, CVS, a couple of other spots in City of Nashville, there is lanes designed specifically like that, and they don't necessarily work because people will take a left, and very specifically, our CVS parking lot, not your issue, but I'm just saying, again, a block away, see it all the time, people come out that side, and again, you know, they kind of tried to design it as a right-turn only, but they come right across and take a left. So it's just kind of, unfortunately, it's just kind of what we deal with sometimes, but, you know, I always wonder about those, how effective they really are in preventing that. I think, like you said, right, if somebody wants to take a left, they're going to find a way to do it, but, you know.
I don't think, in the course of a morning peak hour here, that that slip lane is going to get very little usage, and probably, there'll be many days where it'll never get used.
Yeah, because you're assuming that, obviously, they'll, you know, you'll have a good queue in the.
Right, and plus, when you want, you're there for your donut and your coffee, and there's nothing going to stop you getting it when you're a Dunkin' Donuts customer, I think.
Right.
I don't drink coffee personally.
All right, thank you. Mr. Curry.
I guess I was, the slip lane, I thought that that was connected to the parking lot. Like, if I was coming south on Main Street, and I wanted to stop for business, I would come in Prospect Avenue, and even if I didn't use a drive-through, you know, I'm going south on Main Street, I would have thought regular users would go right out that slip lane and right on Main Street, but you're saying there's not a connection there, and they'd go, so if I was coming, if I'm, if I'm proceeding north to south, and I stop in, and then I leave, do I have to go back up to Prospect Street to go south, or can I get out the slip lane?
You could get out the slip lane, but keep in mind, certainly during the busier times, you're probably going to have a queue there, and you're going to go out, you're going to go out to Prospect.
This looks like this is not.
Mr. Curry, I think as long as there's no cars in queue, you could get through there.
That's just striping, that's not.
Oh, it's just striping?
Just striping.
Oh, I, I thought it was some sort of barrier.
I would think that Dunkin' Donuts would put a little sign by the dumpster that says, "Don't block exit," and I think every driver would realize, if I move up one car length, I'm not going to let anybody out, but that's just me, maybe it would be blocked, I don't know. But anyway, just, just curious.
Any other questions? Thank you for now.
Mr. Chairman, if I could please have Chad Brandon, the project engineer, speak to some of those questions that came up, the slip lane, the wrong turn coming out of the slip lane, that type of thing.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, Chad Brandon, civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. Just to touch on the bypass lane a little bit, we did, again, as Attorney Prunier, Pearlman stated, we did have a number of meetings with staff, and some of that dialogue was directly related to the bypass lane, and how that configuration works with the building's position to Main Street. And what I mean by that is, one of the earlier renditions or concepts had the bypass lane go all the way around the building, and that resulted in the building being about 14 feet further from Main Street, and in the, you know, downtown district, one of the goals is to get that building located as close to Main Street as possible. So, we modified the concept and accommodated the bypass lane to just have a free right out. And the bypass lane is really a requirement from corporate, from Dunkin' Donuts corporate, so. And just to touch on how that would function, there is a connection to the parking area, we are showing that on the plan as striped, so someone could come through the parking lot if they wanted to take a right on Main Street and head south, and you'd and utilize that right-hand exit out of the property. One of the things that we did talk about and we look forward to hopefully addressing with further plan modifications is exaggerating the right-hand turn geometry of that bypass lane to try to enforce and ensure that people wouldn't come out and take a left. And that's typically accommodated through the use of curbing and kinda maintaining that hard radius onto Main Street. So, just wanted to kinda explain a little bit how this plan came together. You know, trying to balance some of the goals of the downtown district with the many meetings and input that we received from town, our city staff. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Curry?
I guess, you know, first of all, I'd love to see a vibrant business here, 'cause it's really been an eyesore for a long time. So, let me start with that. But one of the, I guess, concerns of the overall design was the drive-through in front of the building. I mean, when the master, downtown master plan, I hadn't looked at it in a while, but Mr. Falk, as he can always do, dug it up for me. And in general, that plan, as you know, talks about having the buildings forward. And I went back and looked, and it doesn't surprise you, this was 2003, because that drive-through that was approved by this board, I think it was an O-1 before this package and concept of, you know, was implemented. But I guess, so what would, what's the trade-off? Let's just say that building was up and you weren't looking for the variance, just the drive-through variance, but not that front setback. What gets, what's the impact of that? If the design were flipped, where the building's up and, you know, you don't have that variance for the ten feet?
Well, we looked at a number of layouts with the site. And in order to get the driver to the drive-through window, the, and to have the stacking and the layout of the site work appropriately and meet industry standards, the drive-through does have to be on the Main Street side. And that's just because that's where the driver is located when they negotiate around the building. The, so the goal here is really to meet the objectives of the master plan and to get that building as close to Main Street as possible, but also to accommodate that drive-through lane. So, right now, I believe the building's positioned fourteen feet away from the right-of-way line, which is, you know, four feet further away than what the ordinance wants. 'Cause I believe ten feet is the maximum setback. So, we're very close to that setback and very close to meeting, you know, that requirement. I think one of the things that we're, you know, we're trying to balance and to kinda offset the drive-through being on the Main Street side is proposing, you know, that kind of the visual barrier of the drive-through through the proposal of the fence along the right-of-way line. The wrought iron fence is kind of a theme in downtown that we see in a number of locations. I think the hospital actually has that very similar type of fence out in front of their property. There's fencing like that in front of the Dunkin' Donuts, actually, I believe it's on Canal Street. So, it's a very similar product to the downtown area that we're trying to incorporate in with this design. And what's not reflected in the rendering that we have before you this evening is, we're not really showing landscaping, but there will be landscaping, kinda shrubbery and so on, in front of that fence as well. One of the things that this plan, I think, does really well is it does and it will increase pedestrian activity in the downtown area, which I think is a strong objective of the master plan. That'll be accommodated through the reconstruction of the sidewalk along the front of the property, but also improving the interconnect, the connectivity to the sidewalks on the other side of Main Street with the perpendicular crosswalk now. And we will be proposing a crosswalk across from, or to go across Prospect Street as well. And the main entrance of the building has been situated to be very close to that pedestrian activity. So, you know, that's, that's really where, you know, we think the trade-off is. Is it is a, very much a cleanup project or revitalization project where we'll be able to, you know, clean up a lot of the, you know, the site that's been vacant for so long. But incorporate a plan that we've really tried hard to revise to best meet the objectives of the master plan and a plan that will function adequately. And I think, you know, certainly having the traffic engineer here this evening shows that we've, you know, we've put a lot of effort into having the answers and being able to come before this board with confidence that this is a good development for this project.
All right, thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me. Just a question. One of the things is, I look at the site is, again, thinking about the master plan and kinda what the goal was with that. You know, I know, for example, CVS worked hard to try to get their drive-through. They don't have the same volume through their drive-through, but obviously, they were able to put their building up front and try to, you know, they accommodated a drive-through on the side where it wasn't really, you know, impactful on kind of, you know, giving up on that master plan idea. So, you know, I know Mr. Curry asked any other options. So, with, are there any other options considered to maybe, have you thought about, from an engineering perspective, I don't know, like a false facade? So, basically, it's almost like you wouldn't see the cars in the drive, as they turn and drive through. It's almost like going through a car wash type thing, right? And leaving the same footprint, but having something, a facade that looks like a building, right? But again, you know, kind of shielding that, you know, that idea. I don't know if that was something considered. I'm not proposing that, I'm just trying to figure, see how far you went or looked at this, besides where you can put the building in property. 'Cause I do agree, that maybe you move that building, you're giving up queue.
And there was, there was some discussion about that. And we had actually some good dialogue with city staff regarding, you know, should we try to do some kind of false facade? And what, the conclusion of that dialogue was that it really presents a security issue. You know, you have, you're basically creating an enclosure for all hours that you can't police. So, you have employees, there could be people occupying that space, there could be people living under that space when the store is closed. And again, as Mr. Prohmann, Attorney Prohmann stated, the applicant and landowner owns a few facilities in the city, and they've actually made modifications to, you know, instead of having a rear door, they've relocated a rear door on a building so that it's a side door because they have had security issues. So, they are very aware of some of the difficulties and struggles with their business or any business, probably, in the downtown area. And so, I think good planning and good practice is to not have an enclosure. And that's, again, where we're trying to come up with a balance of, this fence, I think, will create a visual barrier. So, it's not a lot different than looking into a parking lot. If you go down Main Street, you know, many of the parking lots don't even have a fence. But I think the ones that do, they are more, you know, aesthetically pleasing and where we can incorporate some landscaping as well. So, to answer your question, sir, that was on the table. We did talk about that, and we didn't believe that would be a good design option for the site because of security reasons. And frankly, too, I mean, when we were looking at it from an architectural standpoint, it blocks out natural light. It creates a different, different challenges to the business and the welcoming aspects of, you know, consumers and pedestrians walking into the site. So, from a security standpoint, even from a pedestrian coming in from Main Street, there would be that potential to have somebody hanging out in that, in that space, you know, during, certainly during the evening hours or early morning hours where it's not, you know, it's not light everywhere.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, just a couple of points. Mr. Curry, I agree with you. I'm hopeful this site gets developed and there's another eyesore on Main Street. It's that fenced parking lot directly across from CVS. You know, we're all hopeful something happens, something happens there as well. Mr. Chairman, to answer your question directly, Sarah Marshan actually gave us that suggestion to have some type of faux facade or a tunnel effect. And Joe and Rick Carvalho really took a look at it and said, they've had security issues at their other sites, and that's just going to create more problems. And so, that's, as Chad mentioned, we believe that we have a fair balance to meet the objectives of the master plan with what the applicant is proposing. And with that, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I could run through the variance criteria. And we have, we have three variances, Mr. Chairman, but two are very similar, the setback variance. I'm gonna talk about the drive-through first, but the setback variances are the maximum front yard setback. And we have the two setbacks, one on Main and one on Prospect Ave. But to talk to the drive-through first, you have my application. I would call out at the outset that we have a number of similar food service restaurants in the area. You have a Taco Bell, you have Burger King, I think there's a wing joint that's open now. You have a number of drive-throughs coming up from Seminole Plaza up to CVS. You have six separate drive-throughs for banks and other restaurants. So, what we're proposing, I don't believe, is out of character for the neighborhood. You've heard Mr. Hamm talk to the, about the traffic report. We don't think we have any public health, safety, or welfare issues. So, we believe that we are not contrary to the public interest. Again, as to the drive-through, we believe that we're doing our best to meet the spirit of the ordinance. The character of the neighborhood is a mixed commercial use. You have restaurant service, we have medical, we have automotive services. I forgot to mention, when I said that I talked to everybody in the neighborhood, I did talk to my mechanic, Mike Dubey, who owns the H-Daw station directly across Prospect. And I pay, I drive old cars and I pay Mike ungodly amounts of money regularly, it seems. You have heard about the design elements that we've tried to take into consideration for the, with the Main Street master plan and the D1 district. And that includes, again, the parking to the rear, the windows along the facade are all called out in the D1 district, eliminating curb cuts, making this as pedestrian-friendly as possible. So, we believe that we are meeting the spirit of the ordinance with the application before you. I think the next two are pretty straightforward, as we talked about. We believe there's substantial justice to the city and to the applicant. And we don't see there's any diminution in value from this proposal. The substantial justice is that we are proposing to take a long dormant and dead site that's just plain ugly today and bring it back to life. We think there's a benefit to the city, there's a benefit to the applicant in doing that. This is all-in, this is probably a million and a half dollar investment from the Carvallos. So, we don't believe we're gonna be adversely affecting anyone's property values. In fact, we think they're probably be increased. And, you know, we have a very small site, we're a very tight site. And it's less than half an acre for what we're trying to do for this site. We believe that presents a hardship. And we believe we have a reasonable use being proposed. Again, there are similar drive-throughs in the areas or along the section of, this section of Main Street. So, we believe that we have a hardship. I would ask the board to consider the many prior uses that have tried, but just never could make it work. And I think that's evidence of the difficult nature of the site, that the special conditions of the small site right on Main Street really stand out as a hardship for the, for the drive-through portion of this application. Moving to the setback portion of the application, and again, Mr. Chairman, I would just take them to, although there are two separate setbacks, are just, they're the same issue on both Main and Prospect, so I would just take them together. We have a four-foot variance for Main Street. The variance, the ordinance has a ten-foot maximum, and we are proposing a fourteen-foot to the edge of the building. We have a twenty-eight-foot encroachment into that setback coming off of Prospect Ave. But again, Prospect, we have the burden of having two frontages with the corner lot. And the reason why the building is where it is on the site in relation to Prospect is because there's a provision in the drive-through ordinance that requires a certain distance from the drive-through window to the first turn. It has to be forty feet from the drive-through window to the first turn movement. So, we had to place the building far enough back off Prospect so we can make that turn. The, again, you have my, my application. What I didn't call out in my application is if you, you have a tax map in your packet. And if you look at the tax map, if you look at the series of buildings along this side of Main Street from two, I wanna say, 255 Main Street to the Chandler Library and all those Victorian buildings and even Mike Dubey's garage, they're all set back twenty or more feet from the edge of the sidewalk from Main Street. And if we were to put our building right along the sidewalk, right up close as possible to sidewalk, and all else, as you're driving south, it would stick out like a sore thumb. It would, it wouldn't look right. And so, we think it makes sense, given our drive-through, fourteen feet, we think it's gonna fit well with our neighbors, with the placement of our neighbors' buildings as it's there today. Again, we believe we're meeting the spirit of the ordinance, 'cause we, initial drafts of this application had two lanes, one lane for the drive-through and one escape lane all the way out. We're working with staff, we pushed that building as close to Main Street as possible. Again, we have that issue with the drive-through turning movement as to Prospect. So, we believe we're meeting the spirit of the ordinance as much as we can. And again, we have the double frontage setback, which is an additional burden on this property. My substantial justice and diminution of value points here are the same as the drive-through. Again, we have an opportunity to develop a long dormant site, which we believe will increase the property values for our neighbors in the area. And finally, similar to what we said before, we have a very tight site, a very small site. And we are, again, working with staff, making the best possible site, addressing the D1, the master plan, as much as possible while allowing, you know, as little setback encroachment as we can. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would ask, anything else? Yeah, if I may, of Joe Carvalho, speak to his application.
Joe Carvalho, franchise owner, owner of the Main Street Realty, 267 Main Street. I'll keep it really brief, honestly. I just, they did a great job of presenting here. What I wanna tell this party is that I've been in the city now for thirty-four years. And it's always been my mission to give back to the city, I've done everything I can. I was fortunate or unfortunate enough to get my Canal Street store as my first, and I've been there for thirty-four years. And with me and my son, we don't actually run stores, we manage them, we're in the stores every day. And we do our best to make sure that whatever needs that the city and the municipality needs is also taken care of. We have taken the Canal Street site, I don't know how many of you remember it from 1984, but it was something very different than it looks today. It was motorcycle gangs all over the place, and it was, you know, just mayhem when I took over there. In 2001, we completely knocked that down and rebuilt it from scratch, from the ground up. And it looks like what it looks like today. And I took a leap of faith that the area would follow, and, you know, 'cause we were working on the whole railroad square project at the time. And little by little, it did come around, and we got the substation across the street and so on. And when I took over the gas station on East Hall Street, on the East Hall Street location, right before the Hudson Bridge there, that was an embarrassing sight. It was an old gas station there, and they leased me a little bit of space and finally got them out. And three years ago was able to knock the whole thing down and start up again. Because, again, East Hall Street being a gateway into our city, I thought it was important to be the first one to invest in that area, to try to bring in better businesses and more investing. I've had an eye on this site for a very long time. I was here before this board 17 years ago. And we got the special variance for what we needed. Unfortunately, we couldn't complete the deal. My son and I, we only have four stores. He's third-generation franchisee. We are, make it a point to visit every store every day between the three of us, the two of us. We visit all four stores. He usually visits three, and I visit one because I'm getting older. But, and to my point, I know that a couple of Fridays ago, Mr. Falk, I was putting donuts on the shelf on eight o'clock in the morning, and he came in to, you know, buy his coffee, and we chatted a little bit about what was going on. And, you know, you can be, we can be found in our stores every day. That's what we do. So with even neighbors that have, might have some concerns and whatever, we're here to address that. We, we don't want to be the bad neighbor. We want to be the neighbor who works with everyone. We want to try to make everything, you know, as best we can while we still run our business. And we have to answer to corporate too. But we want to be neighborhood-friendly as well. So I just wanted to say, say hello and thank you for what you do.
Hold on, sir. We have some questions here. Hold on. Mr. Currier.
Yeah, first, do you know that I think the Canal Street store is, you know, was the start of the change of a neighborhood. Personally, I appreciate that investment you made. On this site, you know, I have to ask the question, like, if you weren't to have a drive-through, I think you could build by right with no variances. So the question is really the, the impact of the drive-through versus non-drive-through. I don't think anybody could speak to that better than you. What, what does that impact from your?
So both my Canal Street store and my Seminole Plaza store are dying. They're dying of source. With the Canal Street store, we have huge concerns that the Broad Street store actually took a lot away from us. And that's a whole different franchisee. I wish this body hadn't approved that one, to be honest, but that's a whole different franchisee. And it's taken away a tremendous amount of my business. People's habits are changing. They're not like it was 20 years ago even. So the drive-throughs are a vital part of our business. And honestly, I think that stores without drive-throughs, Dunkin' won't approve them, corporate won't approve them anymore because it's become that big of, you know, it's just an element that we can't do without. Our 300 Main Street store is also dying. We were there since, it was a Mr. Donut when I bought that, and some of you can remember that. And again, knock that down, rebuild it, try to really manage it. It was vibrant for a while, but they put a Taco Bell like right in front of it, and they serve breakfast in the morning, and they have a drive-through. And that business has gone, you know, spiraling downhill. So no matter what we do, who we put there as managers, how much time we spend there, it just keeps spiraling downhill. So the drive-through element now of the business is vital. And it just doesn't, honestly, it's not worth any investment if we don't have a drive-through. And again, I just, I got approved from corporate with, you know, a drive-through. They won't approve the site without it. It's, it's dead in the water without it, so.
Thank you for that.
Sir, on the same theme, and then thank you very much for that explanation because it's kind of clear to us, you know, obviously, what, what, what can happen and what can't happen with your franchise. As an owner, you, you described it, you're, I know of the other owners that own way more stores than you do, right? So they're spread pretty thin and expect certain things. You've been in the city long enough, and I don't know if you follow this board, but, you know, one of our biggest problems, I mean, I'm not comparing you because you're very different way you run stores. But, you know, we've had a lot of issues with the East Hall's, there's a lot of issues there.
West Hall's.
West Hall's, I'm sorry.
East Hall's is mine, so.
No, I know, no problem there. And, I mean, to the point where last Sunday I left church on West Hall Street, and we're going to stop for a coffee, and didn't make it because there were four cars in on West Hall Street waiting to take that turn, right? So my question is to you is, again, this is a huge concern here, especially this location and where it is and, and everything that's going on. What can you say to us besides, you know, what, what would you be doing if you looked out the window and saw traffic backing up? Because I think that, that if the manager or the owner was at East Hall Street knowing our issues that we've had in the past, if I, if it was me, I would be either, I don't have the right help, things are not moving fast enough, what's going on? I mean, what do you, what do you offer to mitigate that, or what, what can you tell us, you know, just in general?
So I don't want to correct you, but again, you said East Hall's, it was West Hall's. But my son is actually the expert on drive-through. He's actually being recognized from Dunkin' Donuts for having the fastest drive-through in the system, all of New England, and actually think the system, but they don't know yet. But I'd like to have him speak and to maybe answer some of those concerns, if that okay?
Sure, okay.
I'm Rick Carvallo, sorry. So to, to, to work with those concerns, the first thing I can tell you is when we are in the stores, for instance, we always have our, our cameras on inside the office. So for some reason, I'm not out front working on it. I see, I see, I see the cameras on and something, you know, they're starting to get two, three cars from that road. First of all, I jump out there and make sure that we kind of keep things going. The other thing is we have remote access to all our timers, so I can see in real time how long things are taking and whatnot. The Dunkin' standard is 150 seconds for a customer to get from the menu board to receive their, their order. Our standard, we set at 120 seconds. And our average, for instance, the, let's just use this week, in our peak hours, which is really when the concern is going to be, has been around 86 to 87 seconds. So that is, you know, your, your furthest back person in a 13-car stack is getting through in roughly four and a half, five minutes, which is very, very quick. The other thing is it's going to alleviate some of the pressure actually on West Hall Street because some of our customers are going to be those same customers. So they'll come through our drive-through rather than go there. And that will probably help a lot in alleviating, alleviating some of that stress and some of the backup that you see on that road as well. So, you know, I think with a really properly-run Dunkin' Donuts downtown, that is for some customers heading in that direction where they're going to be getting on the highway anyway, actually kill two birds with one stone by giving us the opportunity to operate and run our location there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope, okay.
We're done. Let's see any questions for us. Thank you.
Okay, any questions from Mr.?
Just, just a statement.
Sure.
When I blew into town in 1985, I did have to flip down the license plate on my Chevy Impala and put gas in at that station, so you're not the only one. And when it snowed, that thing would freeze shut.
Well, you'd always pinch your fingers too, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, before I move on, I have two letters in support of this application. Dear Attorney Proman, we fully support the demolition of 267 Main Street. And I saw on Main Street, the sight of vandalism over the years. There is little traffic on Prospect Street. We think the design and traffic flow is appropriate. We support the project. The Main and family. Also, another one here dated on October 12, 2018, to the National, to the National Zoning Board of Adjustment. Dear Chairman and members of the board, I am the trustee of the McGarrett Realty Trust. The trust owns 273 Main Street and 2 to 4 Prospect Avenue. The beneficiaries of the McGarrett Realty Trust and I reviewed the plans for the new Dunkin' Donuts restaurant at Old Gibbs Gas Station. The beneficiaries of the McGarrett Trust have authorized me to advise the board that we have no objection to the proposed Dunkin'. In fact, we believe it will be an improvement to the neighborhood, a benefit to our tenants, and add value to the trust properties. McGarrett Realty Trust, Gerald Puni as the trustee. Okay, with that, anybody else in the audience like to speak in favor of the application? Okay, seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Okay, come on up one at a time, give us your name and address.
My name is Mike Doobie. I live at 7 Gilson Road in Nashua. And I have, I own the building that's just adjacent to that on the opposite corner. You already answered a couple of my questions I was going to ask you. When I was on that master plan, I thought everything had to be up by the middle of the street. You've already answered that. My second concern is the drive-through. We all know that Dunkin' Donuts is a fantastic business. And you know that that drive-through is going to end up coming all the way around and coming out onto Prospect Avenue and down Main Street, which is going to impede my customers from actually going into the station because that, their drive-through is at the same times as customers like to drop their cars off first thing in the morning on their way to work. So that was my second, my second one. The third one was, most of the time, I go to work early in the morning and I see these Dunkin' Donuts getting their deliveries, they're not usually by a box truck, it's all by tractor-trailer. How is that going to get in and out of there? It's going to unload on Main Street. So those are, those are the three concerns that I had. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from students? Okay, thank you. Come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Todd Whitney. I live at 32 Gordon Street in Nashua, New Hampshire. I also work across the street from this proposed site. I'm the lawyer at One Prospect Street in the Victorian brick building, directly across the street from this proposed site. I'm here today in my own capacity and on behalf of the ownership of the, my fam, my family owns the property where I work. It's in an LLC called Buta Jepa One LLC, which is indicated on the, on the chart. Of course, if this proposed use had no drive-through lane, I would not be here tonight. I would accept the Dunkin' Donuts without a drive-through. And if the drive-through were on the south side of the building, I wouldn't be here tonight. There's been a lot of argument about how there are many other drive-throughs in the area. They've been listed, CVS, Walgreens, et cetera. Each and every one of those other drive-throughs is on the side of the building, and the drive-throughs are at least perpend, appear to be perpendicular to the main thoroughfare traffic on Main Street. It is very rare in Nashua, and probably in a lot of places, to see the drive-through lane parallel to the main thoroughfare, which means everyone going back and forth has to see the cars stacked up, people in their minivans waiting for their coffee, extra cream, extra sugar. And we just have to, and the first, you'll look right into the drive-through window. And I understand that was the single most objectionable element of this entire proposal, which is why there were many staff meetings about it, which is why Sarah Marshand suggested an enclosed area. You've got to bear in mind, this gentleman is talking about investing 1.5 million. If he succeeds, this is going to become a fixture of downtown Nashua. I know we are not talking about the historic district north of the river, but we're still talking about downtown Nashua, quote-unquote downtown Nashua, which runs from, as Mayor Donale Lozo used to say, "from the hunt to the hunt." And we're not quite as far south as the Hunt home, but we're still really pretty much close to the heart of downtown Nashua. So I strongly believe this is, having a drive-through lane which is parallel to the traffic, either looking for it or looking with it, is really not in keeping. I mean, across the street is my Victorian-style historic brick building. The building to the south of this proposed site is the apartment building, which is somewhat historic. I won't call it art deco, but it's got a distinctive look. It's all brick. Two buildings north of this is the brightly painted Victorian-style clabbered home owned by Pong Mated, who's in, in favor of this arrangement, but that, we're the ones that will be looking at this. And I certainly understand the efforts of the applicants to address this visual issue with a fence. You know, it, you can see through it. You're still going to see the cars. They're shrubs or not. In my opinion, it's a, you know, a token effort. They're trying, but it's not, and as Attorney Proman had said, we're trying to screen as much as possible. Well, as much as possible is not enough. The, I can't even, really at this moment, I can think of a lot of drive-throughs in Nashua. The only one I can think of which has the cars picking up their orders parallel to the main thoroughfare is the McDonald's on East Hall Street with Wendy's across and the Nashville House of Pizza. The Wendy's way up on Amherst Street by where the Pier One Imports is, is kind of like that. But you still pick up your, your order on the far side of the building. Just to drive by and see the drive-through window, and I see my time is expiring, just to see the drive-through window is, I don't know how to describe it. I think it's going to be kind of sad and depressing. And downtown Nashua is going to have to look at that for decades if we get it. My office is on the second floor. I look down anyways, but that's just me. My customer, my clients, rather, are, visit me in my office and will also look down, but be that as it may. So you, as board members, do not have to accept a drive-through, and you do not have to accept one that's in the front of the property. If by, you know, there's been other discussion about how variances, about 40 feet from the drive-through window for the first turn, if they had sought maybe different variances somehow to get it on the south. I know they've looked at that already, but I think if we, if you accept this, it's a sad day for the future downtown Nashua will be looking at for the rest of our lives. And it's, it's really not right. All the other ones are perpendicular. And lastly, I will say that the, oh, it's by the, the thing about the northbound traffic making left turns, obviously you can't predict exactly how it's going to go, but I think at this point it's merely speculation as to how that's going to go. The, there's no scientific, all we're doing is, that's still a busy section. The, the southbound traffic is going to, the northbound people wanting to make a left are going to have to wait a while. The lights are going to be changing, they're going to miss their opportunity, have to wait another one or two cycles of lights. So you don't have to accept this, that was the single most objectionable issue. It is with me, and I think it will be for all the people in Nashua that didn't take the time to come here. But having a drive-through that's right, parallel to the sidewalk of the Main Street, I think is bad. And I'm sorry, but it's just, everyone's going to have to look at it. So I just don't think the case is compelling enough. I mean, they've tried their best to, to address it, but it's just not compelling enough. That's all. Thank you so much.
Hold on, any questions? So you're, again, just to clarify, you wouldn't have an opposition to a drive-up if it was on the side of the building?
If it was on the south side of the building, and they, you know, I, and even they stack going in that direction, I, I wouldn't have, if that were the case, you know, but, but having them come right along the front, that, it's just not, it's, you don't see that anywhere, almost nowhere else in Nashua. And, and to have it right smack downtown is, and just, just a little fence that, what, screens it a little bit? That's not going to help.
All right, thank you. Anybody else to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the, to the application? Okay, seeing none, Attorney Proman, you have five minutes to rebuttal.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board. I may call Chad Brandon up here, but just, just a couple of comments. Mike Doobie spoke about a potential conflict with his customers, not unlike myself over on Exit 7 at the Sunoco Station, dropping cars off in the morning. We're confident in Vanessa's traffic report. Vanessa did a Q study on the most recent Dunkin' Donuts on Broad Street. A maximum of 13 cars are in their Q lane for a very short window of time during peak hours. Our stacking lane can accommodate 13 cars. And again, that's maximum for a short window of time. It's typically much, much less than that. We're confident in that traffic study. We've gone over it in detail. We think we're not going to have, I mean, there will, there will be turning traffic coming on Prospect, but we think our site can accommodate our needs. I can't speak to tractor-trailers. I would have Joe Carvallo come up and talk to that specifically. I don't disagree with the comments coming from Attorney Whitney, but please know that we looked at the site and to, to capture as much stacking as possible, that's the only location where we could put the building in the drive-through. We, we could turn the building such that the drive-through is on the south side, but then we're gonna have, then the variances would be for a lack of stacking distance. We'd be here for a hundred and twenty feet of stacking where the ordinance requires a hundred and twenty, and I wouldn't even make that case, 'cause that would, that would never fly. So we believe we have the, the best possible compromise where the location of the drive-through is. Now, with that said, Mr. Chairman and members, we believe that the wrought iron fence is gonna be the most appealing, most aesthetically acceptable to the city. We're not tied to that. If the board would, would consider a solid brick, brick wall to better hide and better screen the drive-through, we're okay with that. We, we think the wrought iron fence is a better look, a better proposal, but if the board would consider, you know, a stronger screening, a, a solid wall of some sort, we would certainly welcome that discussion. Anything? Want to talk to tractor-trailers? If I may.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I have to stop you. The rules are, I can only have one person speak. And, and I'm sorry, I, I know I probably, I go through that in the beginning and sometimes people forget, but as you remember, right?
Sure.
One person can speak.
Okay.
So you can, you can speak to us. If you wanna take, I, I think you can take one minute to prefer.
Sure. I can tell you, we just had a staff meeting maybe two weeks ago and the tractor-trailer and the box car issue came up. So if I could just have one, one second.
Sure.
Right, okay. As I mentioned at the outset, the deliveries, there's a daily delivery that comes off-hours of the donuts themselves that come nearby, somewhere in Massachusetts, like Tewksbury or somewhere. And those come by a box truck. They come off-hours. And that is how the East Hollis Street, how Canal Street gets serviced and it's not been an issue. Weekly, there is a tractor-trailer that shows up with solid goods or refrigerated products, products that can last a duration. And Dunkin' Donuts corporate and the franchisee coordinates those for late night, early morning, one in the morning. So that truck either comes into the parking lot and then backs out or perhaps backs out and stays on Prospect for a short window of time where they unload. But it's, it's off-hours. That's how, again, Canal, East Hollis, Seminole Plaza, that's how they, they've been operating for years now and without complaint, without concern for the city. And Chad just did mention one other thing. Again, we looked at the configuration, where to put that building, many times over. If you had a different configuration, such as Attorney Whitney suggested, there's a different location for the drive-through, it would trigger exits onto Main Street that, that we're trying to eliminate. We are eliminating two curb cuts and we have a right turn only with our proposal. If you had a different configuration, you'd probably have to have some type of entrance or exit other than the Prospect Avenue driveway that we have today. So again, we believe we've, we have the best location. You know, we are aware of the D1 district. That's why we're here. But we believe we can meet those concerns in the master plan in the D1 district and, you know, have a new restaurant where you see it today. That's it. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Attorney Whitney, you have the opportunity to come back in, in five minutes. Excuse me? One, one, let me just rephrase. It's either one of, one, it's one, one of you? I, I'm sorry. And you have, you have five minutes.
You know, again, briefly getting back to the issue of location of the drive-through, which side of the building, you don't necessarily have to reconfigure all the curb cuts. If the, if the section that is along the front of the building, if that didn't have the pull-up, drive-up window and they could just pass by without stopping there, I wouldn't be so concerned. If, if the drive-through, if the stop and get your goods window was on the south side of the building and then they continued on around, now that might require a different set of variances. So, but stopping and seeing some person behind a glass window, I mean, it's just not appropriate for this, for this area so close to the heart of downtown. So I, the only thing new I'm adding is if they, you know, if they were using that to just get on out without stopping there, I wouldn't be so concerned. But it is, that type of thing for this area is, you know, for such, anyways, that's all.
Excuse me, any questions? I, I have a question for you. The applicant just made a proposal, whatever, as, as, as an alternative fence that if, you know, in our discussions, we, we discussed it, if we said, hey, we would rather have a solid brick, like, wall there, right, instead of a fence, right? And obviously, they can build up to six feet, but I'm not talking about height, but let's just say with something that would be of a, of a height where, you know, you would not see a regular car or you'd probably see a van or a truck, but a car. Would that, in your minds, mitigate some of the concerns if, if a good part of that was shielded?
Well, it's not as bad, but, you know, then you're like, if it's a opaque barrier that, obviously you've already, you've already tried to address the drive-through concept, which apparently doesn't work for the, the applicants because they feel that, you know, the security issues. So just having a high non-see-through barrier is, doesn't really, I don't think it, you're still gonna see the roofs of the cars. You're still gonna see the drive-up window poking through above. It's still stop-and-go traffic that everyone has to look at in that sense. So I don't, I don't think that is sufficient for me. In this, it ought to be perpendicular to the flow of traffic like all the other ones. And, you know, the cases, I see where they're getting at, but it's not compelling enough.
All set? Okay. Okay, with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing and open the, the public meeting. Mr. Curry?
Well, uh, I'm on the iron wrought fence on this one. Couple, you know, prior to the testimony this evening, I was struggling with the driveway in front of the building because of what I initially stated, the master plan, you know, having the building close. From the testimony this evening, I, I believe the, the applicant has genuinely thoroughly assessed the situation. I find it credible that, you know, a drive-through is needed for a viable business. I find it credible that this design is the best that there is to work with, you know, and, and we have this parallel drive-through left behind. It's interesting to think about, well, the wrought iron fence idea, you know, that I think puts wind in the sails of, of, you know, of what they're offering because that visual barrier, you know, could be very beneficial. Because I think without, you know, I think without it, there's a lot of credibility with Mr. Whitney's concern that, you know, having a, you know, the drive-through is facing the street and it's not in the spirit of the master plan. I wouldn't wanna try to come up with Jack's idea or a design tonight of a fence that might mitigate it. Maybe there's some high value that a, maybe a different design could offer over this. While I think a fence goes a long way, in this case, it, it, I mean, I, I look at that top-right view there and, and I'm like, oh, yeah, you're still gonna see it. So there's a great pull. There's a lot of attributes to have a viable business here and this could be it. You know, it was disappointing to learn that it just wouldn't work and I believe it to be the case. It just wouldn't work without a drive-through. I, you know, I guess I, so I'm, I'm, I'm pretty much in the middle of this and I'm looking to see what my colleagues say. You know, on one hand, if, if this were to be approved, I would feel like stipulating that the planning board, you know, which does more with aesthetics, they, you know, to encourage them to consider what fence might blend this proposed business in with the, the downtown master plan as best as possible. I guess a couple other thoughts. I didn't know that that West Hollis Street, get that right, West Hollis, not East Hollis Street, you know, backs up like your experience did. But then again, I remember our former board member, Mr. Rapucci, saying that. He lives over that way. He said that happened a lot. But it, it's compelling to me about the thirteen cars maximum at that Broad Street, which I've heard is just a booming business, and that this could stack thirteen. So I, I, I feel that that, you know, I, I guess I lean more towards the traffic study than, you know, I, I certainly appreciate Mr. Dubey coming up with his valuable concern 'cause if that backs up, it is gonna impact his business, you know, and he's been there a long time. But I guess I, I hedge a bit more towards, you know, the, the, the traffic report on that aspect. But I'm not a clear decision one way or the other and I'm looking to see what other colleagues here have on this. Where I'm at.
Mr. Tally?
So I understand the, the need for the drive-through. It won't be this business if they can't have the drive-through. I can understand that. So it's, it's, it's whether we, in my mind, we accept the drive-through or we don't. And is there anything that we can do that would satisfy the needs of, of everybody there? They've already stated that where the, where the pickup window is, they need the forty feet to make that first turn. The only other viable place, I think, for the stacking purposes would be on the north side of the building. And I think they would run if they, if it was moved to there or they had to configure it to be there. You run into the problem of the crosswalk coming over and then your forty feet to make the right out of the property, probably you'd have to, to move that a little bit. Does that, are you really gaining anything by moving it there? You gain a few, a few minutes of stop period while somebody picks up their coffee. You're still gonna have the car stop there to, to come around the corner of the building if you pick it up on the north side. I don't, I don't think there's a huge gain to that at all. So I look at it as, you're still gonna have that drive-through area that comes on, on that side of the building. You know, you're looking at the ten feet. Our paper says thirteen feet. The plan says fourteen feet. So I, I wanted to address that. I don't have any problem with that setback area. It's, it's pretty minor. I'd have to go agree with the testimony that says that to be even closer, it's quite a bit different from the properties on each side of the building. I like the fact that the parking's on the back. That does meet, you know, what we're trying to accomplish with the master plan. It is a small property. They're pretty much maxing it out, I would say. I don't know what is gonna happen at the planning board as far as snow removal. It's a, a pretty tiny street, so that'll get vetted out at planning board with the, with the snow part of it. I like the wrought iron. I think better than I would, I, I don't think I would prefer to see a brick wall or something. It's, it's, we don't have brick walls anywhere that I can think of up and down Main Street. I think the wrought iron is, would be a, a look that is more commonly seen throughout the city. I think that if they're going to mix that with some shrubbery that is maintained, that would be a nicer look. The only other thing I think about, the cars coming north, is maybe some headlight issue right in there. But again, you're still got the whole sidewalk, a fence and shrubbery between the, the street and people are used to it on the other side of the street anyhow. No problem with the property values. It would be nice to have this piece of property that sat idle for so long to be developed and you're gonna get walking traffic there. I, I like the fence also for the walking traffic because for people that are passing by, they're not going on and off the property as they're walking down the sidewalk. I like that part of it. And if they want to actually go to the location, they'll have the crosswalk area that's right there to enter the property coming north or south. I'd be a little concerned with people walking up the driveway, but I, I don't think, it's not the side with the door, so I don't think that'll be as much of an issue. Overall, I tend to approve the, the proposal. It would be nice to have something that doesn't have the drive-through, but I think that, I think the finished product might look better than the concerns that, that we might have up front.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Lyle?
I, the, the drive-through lane being along Main Street is a thing that really gives me trouble. It's not the look that the downtown master plan envisions. It's not compatible with the rest of downtown. I, I don't have any problem with the, the business there or even that there is a drive-through. I think, I agree with the applicants that a drive-through is necessary for a business of this nature. I, like Mr. Curry, I don't have brilliant ideas as to how to solve this. But, you know, I, I'm concerned, for example, the pedestrian traffic, they would have to cross that drive-through lane to get to the doors of the, of the business. And that could be, given that that's just past where the, the drive-through window is, that could be problematic. Although I, there are some other restaurants that do that. I'm also dubious that northbound traffic on Main Street would be terribly interested in turning left into Prospect Avenue to go to this Dunkin' Donuts. Most people hate crossing the street and then especially if they're headed in that direction and they would have to make another left turn to get out. So I wonder how many people would actually do that. I, I'm really, you know, I'm, I'm on the wrought iron fence about this. I, I, I think the fence there is, is kind of off-putting in terms of having a, an approachable downtown look. So, I don't know.
I'm also struggling with the drive-through front. Now, I'm, I don't have an issue with the business and I understand the need for the drive-through. I, I, and again, I'm not struggling so much with the drive-through. It's just kinda where it is or more so what it's gonna look like with cars. And, and it's a, you know, beautiful rendition. And, and it's a, you know, beautiful rendition, right? And we're looking at this, but I don't see cars stacked up there, right? As, as, and so I'm trying to envision what that would be like on Main Street, Main Street in that area, and, and whether or not, you know, that's something that's kinda aesthetically pleasing, or, you know, belongs there. I'm not saying it doesn't, I'm just trying to understand that a little bit more. And I think I struggle more with, maybe it's just my personal thing, you know, the, the... For me, it's more of, is the wrought iron fence and shrubbery, let's say, enough? Is there, you know, one of the things, you know, that Mr. Currier mentioned was, you know, kind of giving some direction on the planning board, um, but I think if it's too vague, it doesn't really help, right? So it's either this or that. And I also believe, though, that if we were to approve a drive-through here, with whatever we, with or without stipulation, I think that in their process, right, I think that they would really get down to, um, you know, that, that. So I don't know, you know, what we could say at this point that would make a difference other than if we were really adamant about not seeing any cars at all, right? And, and kinda describing that, um, but... Part, part, part of, part of is I'm not really objection, uh, objectioning the business being there, Dunkin' Donuts being there with a drive-through. I'm just trying to wrap my head again around that drive-through on, you know, where it is, and whether or not, you know, it, it's okay, it, it would be, when built out with everything, whether or not aesthetically, I guess aesthetically is the word I'm using, would be, would, would be fine and fit in. You know, as far as the master plan goes, um, again, I know that, that's what we're talking about. I, you know, as I, as I drove up and down the street again, really looking at the properties and, you know, sometimes I ask myself, you know, some of these properties, are, are they, uh, uh, you know, will they ever change in our lifetime, right? Will they ever change? And that's not really the reason why or why not. I'm just kind of looking at, again, the perspective of this, where it's not on the, the main corner, you know, of, um, of, of the Hollis Streets and, and Main Street. So, so I guess I'm not really too opposed to having the building back, back a bit. I'm just back at that, the drive-through, and whether or not, you know, that's, that, that'll work out fine for, for it. The really only concern I have for safety would be, would be coming south of Main Street at night, and whether or not headlights would be an issue or not. It may be only somebody in the turn, but, you know, again, there's oncoming traffic all the time on the other side, so probably not an issue. As Ms. Vitale mentioned, it's probably off the road, separated by fencing or whatever would happen there. And that's really it. And the only other concern I had was, again, for that deliveries, and what the impact of that is on traffic coming into the site. 'Cause I notice, not, not this applicant's Dunkin' Donuts, but other Dunkin' Donuts, I've noticed trailers just come in and just park and take five, six parking spots, and whatever time it takes them to unload and go. But again, um, I just wouldn't want that to be any more of a problem than it is, but it sounds like, um, they can determine when that, that happens, so... So I'm, I'm neither for nor, or against right now at this point with the drive-through, unfortunately. I'm just trying to figure that out.
Looking at you.
Well, I'm more in favor than not. I believe the applicant, um, has maxed out his footprint. I believe, I mean, he's been in Nashville for thirty-four years with his successful businesses that he runs, and it would be a financial hardship if we did not approve a drive-through in this location. He wouldn't even be approved to open up another franchise. So I'm more in favor than not. I, I do not see, um, another option of the way the drive-through is set up. And regarding the wrought iron or, or a wall, I think aesthetically, the way it's presented, to me, is much better than a wall. I like, again, I'm more in favor than not at this time.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
Well, in listening, I have to agree with my, all of my colleagues. It's a conundrum. It's you want to do what's in the best interest of everyone, and that includes the individuals who wanna purchase this, and they want to present this to the city as an option. I like the wrought iron fence, it works well on Canal Street. We've seen it in other areas where it works. I think a wall would be very obtrusive and wouldn't work at all. You can't have this business without a drive-through, because we've all gotten used to, um, making it more simpler for ourselves, and we don't wanna get out and walk. So, we wanna just drive-through, pick up and go. I know when we considered Broad Street, a lot of these same issues were present, and as I go up and down Broad Street and I pay attention to that Dunkin' Donuts, I watch the people flow and go, and it didn't present the problems that a lot of people were afraid it might present, which was a good thing. There's another Dunkin' Donuts that, um, even though it's not in this city, it's in Manchester. When you come off of Exit Five, it, you have to come off, make a left, make a right, and then make another right into it. And I used to work back in the mill buildings there, and didn't stop people from making the left, making the right, and making the right, and going in. It was always utilized. So having it off the beaten path, so to speak, and making the turns, I don't think that would prohibit or inhibit people who got used to seeing it there and wanted to utilize the services. I think I am probably more in favor than not. While aesthetically, it's not the greatest option, and I concur with everything Attorney Whitney said, I also paid a great deal of attention to the traffic study that has an impact, has an impact on the turning ratio and what's going to happen, and are cars gonna slow up. The other thing I'm hoping is that it will alleviate some of the issues at that West Hollis Dunkin' Donuts, because that is a nightmare on Elm Street, seriously, trying to get in and out. And this may take away some of that pain. So for me, I see benefits and I see, you know, liabilities, but, um, I think I'm gonna come down in favor of the benefits and support this application.
Just, uh, clarify. I know that, that the applicant spoke a lot about the drive-through, and, and it's not a viable business without it. Again, it's just a reminder that the financial aspects of any application, unfortunately, really can't consider that. So, um, you know, again, that's just, um, just, just kind of a note there.
I think that was a comment by all of us, but that's...
So, listening to Ms. McKay, um, I guess I'm, I'm feeling more, in a position of not having enough reason to deny, in, in my position right now. And, you know, again, maybe it's more of a personal type of view of, of the, of the project. So, you know, and again, uh, this is not, you know, this is, uh, busy, it's a busy, you know, it's the busiest street in Nashville, pretty much besides Denny Webster Highway. It's busy, it doesn't have the same speeds as Denny Webster Highway has, you know, down the South End. So, I, I guess it wouldn't be unexpected that we would see traffic, right? Or we'd see that. So, um, there is, you know, credibility, I mean, the traffic study was very extensive. I mean, I, 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 I read through it actually, without, I didn't, you know, didn't look at all the, the charts, but I read through it all, so... So, again, my position, you know, has, you know, I've, I've actually changed my position a little bit, that, that I don't think I would deny it based on, on this so far. So, that's where I sit right now.
I guess where I sit, I, uh, is I'm, you know, hearing all speaking, I'm, I guess I'm feeling most like Mr. Lionel is, uh, I, I mean, on that. While I'm almost desperate to see a business come in here versus what it is, you know, there's the the struggle with the drive-through there, and I guess I would need to feel that it's adequately camouflaged, I, maybe that's not the right word, and I'm not sure if the fence is doing it for me, so I'm, I'm, I'm inclined not to have support for it. That's just where I'm at, I'm not trying to change anybody's mind.
Would, I, I'm just asking. I, I'm, I'm, I'm in the same split spot you are, you know, uh, right now. If, if, is there a way, first of all, A, the question would be, if there's a way to make a stipulation to, and, uh, to include some type of language that would ensure some type of camouflaging, right? And maybe we're not the, I'm not, I don't wanna defer this issue to another board if it doesn't belong there, but, you know, if that's something that belongs at the planning board stage, right? Because ultimately, um, they have to approve this, right? If we stipulate, if there was some language we could stipulate with some camouflaging, would that bring you to a different position, or are you still in the same position? I know it's a tough question, it's very...
It's an unusual request, but it, it's almost like, I remember the, you know, the, if it's approved by this board, the, it, it's almost like the planning board has to have the shoe fit the foot. You know, and they complain, you've given us a shoe that doesn't fit the foot, how do we make it fit? You know, I, and as I hear the testimony, I also just throw this idea out of, okay, well, you know, there, there's some members here hung up on the, uh, the camouflaging, for lack of a better term, of, of that drive-through in the front. Could there be another thought of, you know, maybe a reconfiguration of the fence, maybe a little bit taller? I mean, I, there's a concern, we don't want it to look like a prison wall on Main Street, but is there something else there? Like the, the, you know, I'm trying to think, well, how tall is that wrought iron fence at the Canal Street? Geez, it seems like, is it more than six feet? Could you have some configuration there that, that, that does a nice job of camouflaging the car look to make it more in concert with the master plan? I don't know, I, I, I wish I could offer something. I'm, I'm, I'd rather, boy, it wouldn't be great if there was a plan we're looking at, so that accomplishes that. I, I'm not convinced that that does here, but the idea of, just the thought of a table, if there was a, for the applicant to...
I, I know you're saying that, but I'm sorry, we, we can't have any, 'cause, well, unless, unless we decide to have that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I know the rules, I have a suggestion for the board, but I know I have to be recognized.
I, I, I know what you're probably suggesting, so let, let's, let's just finish with Mr. Currier, and then I'll, I'll ask him.
No, I, I, I feel it's more, it's more better, for lack of better saying it, that, uh, you know, to have a, a, a plan or a fence that, say, more of us feel comfortable with, that, that accomplishes the, you know, meeting the master plan spirit and intent. And then go, and then, you know, approving that and moving that to the planning board, but...
And I think you make a lot of sense. So, what, what do you think if we were to, um, uh, see if the applicant would be willing to come back with some type of design or designs to, um, they've been listening to what we've been saying, what our concerns are? Is that kinda what you're thinking, maybe come back with some type of visual so we can see that? Come back with something, um, more subs, more definitive?
Yes, or more substant, more...
I, I think they...
A fence that, uh, that looks good and, and, and keeps it in concert with the master plan, 'cause I'm, I'm not sure if what's here now is the max, you know, could there be an improvement? I mean, they've thought this through, and I really appreciate that, and it's, and, you know, but I'm, you know, maybe there's just not enough camouflage of that, because, you know, uh, that's where I'm at.
So...
I'd, I'd be happy to have entertain, to, to reopen the public hearing, to ask the applicant as he hears this board struggle with it, if, if there's some opportunity there.
Sure. Ms. Vitale, before we move forward?
Yeah, I would, I agree with that. I, I think that if there was a more visual on the exact look of it, would be extremely helpful. And I wanted to ask if, on the plan that we got, it says construct an, an eight-foot-wide arched opening in a wall at the walk. I didn't know if that was, because later it says about the wrought iron fence further down in the, on our, uh, application here. I didn't know if they, there was a combination of those two things that they were suggesting, and maybe if we had a visual of the whole thing, it would show us more what that property front would look like. And in addition, um, to be able to see where, where the cars were. If I'm reading this, the, the measurements correctly, you really would only see about two cars there. The other one would be driving away, away. So, when I was thinking about it, stacking, you know, having it on the north side of the building to pick up and everything, you would actually see everybody stacked there. Where this, you're really looking at two cars. If I go up and down Main Street, um, and I say, is there any viable way to make it different? There's other places on Main Street that you do see cars pretty much right up at the, at the road area that you're gonna see one or two cars. You go across to the hospital, they have the one tractor-trailer unit that they have, uh, the things there. It's, it's right on the wall. They have a wrought iron fence along there, too. So, I, I'm trying to see if there's any way that the applicant could do it differently, and I think they pretty much have. I think it's just a visual for us to see what it would look like with two cars and the actual look of it. And, and this is a good rendition, but it's not, it could, it could be a little bit more exact as far as the shrubbery and everything.
Thank you. Any other discussion before I make a motion? Okay, so I'll, I'd like to make a motion to reopen the public hearing, to specifically ask the applicant whether or not they would be willing to come back to us with some, um, some type of, uh, design or, uh, visuals for fencing slash camouflage. All right, so I'll make that motion.
Second, then?
Second, by Ms. Kay, all in favor? And Ms. Boras is voting, that's five to nothing. Mr. Perlmutter, you've heard us.
Mr. Chairman, um, I was going to suggest the board continue this, uh, hearing to allow us to come back with plans. And I think we can address your concerns. We had a number of iterations of different walls. Uh, there was a concrete-faced stucco type, or concrete with a stucco-type wall. There was a brick wall, we settled on the wrought iron with, with the brick posts. Uh, we can come back to the board, show different heights. We can put cars, um, in queue. We, we can try and address, uh, the concern the board's having. So I would, uh, welcome the opportunity to do that.
Okay, uh, Mr. Currier. Obviously, Mr. Perlmutter's offering that. Are you looking for something more specific, like fencing? Or are you just okay with then coming back with some type of a camouflage? Are you looking for some different options, or are you looking really for that wrought iron type fencing?
I, I guess as I look at, just, this is just me, as I look at that top-right picture, I, I, I'm, I'm, I, I guess I, I lean towards, you know, knowing that this business would need a drive-through to be successful. I don't think that that ma, is matching the master plan enough. I don't think that that ma, is matching the master plan enough. You know, I, I think I, I think the two of us, just, it's just the two of us, hey, it's two out of five here, uh, are not feeling that's meeting the master plan enough. I don't want to speak for Mr. Lionel. And what I'd be looking for, at least for myself, is, is, is a fence or a design that I see, yeah, that meets the master plan even though there's a drive-through there. You know, if, if it didn't, if I felt it, it wasn't meeting that master plan, I, I'm more inclined to say, well, you know, there could be another business that could go in there that, you know, hopefully is viable without a drive-through along the street. And to me, that's really, it, it's either, it's either going to be this with a drive-through or just another business altogether. This is what my feeling is. I hate to not see this one work, but I'm just not feeling that that is in concert with the master plan. That's me. Maybe you should ask Mr. Lionel as well, I mean...
Well, yeah, I, the...
When I put you on, so, Ms. Lionel, I, I think that, I was just trying to get a feeling whether or not Mr. Curry was looking for something specific. But I think what Mr. Curry is saying is, I'm just looking for something that is more in sync with the master plan or that type of idea.
And I, I do, I did have an idea. I don't know what, how, how usable this is for a, a fence where you have, um, flat slats at an angle, but, and paint them to make it look like a mural if, as you're going by, at least in one direction. And maybe it could, you know, look like people going into the Dunkin' Donuts or looking like the front of a Dunkin' Donuts shop or something like that. Because that, to me, gives the effect of what we were trying for doing in downtown Nashville where we have murals. And it would disguise the cars waiting in, in the drive-through. It was just this thing that popped into my head. I'm, I'm not, I don't know whether it's workable or not. But I definitely would like the applicant to come back with some more realistic renderings of, of options that we could look at. Because if I had to vote today, I would probably vote against this.
So, Ms. Perlman, I think you get the gist of, we're looking for, uh, you know, what we're looking for. You've heard what we're looking for. I, I will describe it, whether or not you have to be...
What we need to do, so that, the building on, uh, the elevation on the upper right is a Dunkin' Donut, uh, excuse me, is a Duncan elevation, um, from, uh, the Duncan architect. And it's just that elevation or just that shot there. What we need to do is take that elevation and put it onto the site plan so you see the big picture. All right, and, and we can do that. So, we will, uh, be back. But I beg you please not thir, November thirteenth because I have Hamilton tickets.
We can put it as far, we can put it up as wherever you want to be. So, what are the options?
November twenty-seventh, I believe, is the second meeting, just say the second meeting in November.
It's the twenty-seventh.
Is that, is that too mu, is that enough time, twenty-seventh?
That's, that's plenty of time.
Okay. All right, so, um, we're in agreement. So, uh, I'm, so we're all set.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing and reopen the public meeting. So, um, if there's any other discussion, I'll just make a motion to, um, to...
I'll make the motion.
Oh, go ahead, sir.
Oh, no, I, well, I'll, I'll be having to make the motion.
Okay.
Per our discussion, I'd make a motion that we table this case into the second meeting in November. And, uh, that's a date certain and it would be, uh, actually the first on the agenda as well. That's my motion.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Lionel. All in favor? That's five to nothing. Thank you very much.
Chairman, most, the things where most, they're, they're probably more appropriate for, that looks at aesthetics for the downtown master plan. Even though the fence and the wall, the screening is more of an accessory type of thing, but it's probably something that they would take a strong look at as well. Just FYI.
But I also think though, um, to Mr. Curry's point, I think...
It is part of the drive-through, so I know it's an integral part of what they're asking for tonight. So, it kind of straddles both boards' review, I, I believe.
All right. So, I'll close the public meeting for case number four. Folks, if you could step outside, please. Our meeting is still in session. Thank you.
Thanks, all. All right, have a good night.
Two Boston, Eddie.
Mr. Boucher.
Boston in the fifth.
I don't believe Attorney, uh, Whitney heard you.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me.
Mr. Whitney?
Attorney, Attorney Whitney? Attorney Whitney? We still have a meeting? We're still conducting business? If you mind stepping outside? No, thank you very much. Thank you. We have some meeting minutes.
Yep, from October ninth.
October ninth. Does anybody see any issues or any corrections they'd like to make?
I wasn't at that meeting, but I didn't see anything that looked out of order and I'd be willing to...
I, I didn't, uh, I didn't see anything else, saw anybody else?
Looked okay.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, October ninth, two thousand eighteen meeting minutes. Seconded by Ms., so Ms. Vitale will be voting on this one. So, sorry, we're just alternating. I should have been...
I'll second it.
I think Ms. Vitale...
Oh, did you? Okay.
Okay, all in favor? So, that's five. Okay. Uh, we have new agenda yet?
No agenda yet because we have an extra week in the calendar. The next meeting is the thirteenth. Right now, we have, uh, four cases. And that's probably all we have. And as soon as the agenda's all written up, I'll email it to everybody. Probably by the end of the week or by Monday.
And one other thing...
I need that because I, we, oh, we have nothing, so there is no regional impact.
So, and then the only other thing was...
There's also a ca, I think there was a calendar...
There was.
Uh, for the next year's meeting dates.
Yep.
There was one mistake on that calendar, actually. I think it was just prob, probably on the order of a typo, if I could find that calendar.
It's on the back of the summary.
Let's see.
It says two thousand eighteen, that's this year.
But the, if you flip the page, two thousand nineteen is there.
Oh, okay.
So, to, for Mr. Falk, on the two thousand nineteen hearing dates, on the May twenty-first, I think that's supposed to be May twenty-eighth. We just take a look at that. The second, the s, the second meeting in May, second Tuesday in May, correct me if I'm wrong, is May fourteenth?
We meet on the second Tuesday.
On the fourth. But they're not, they, they highlighted the twenty-seventh because it's Memorial Day. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, no, if we, if we look on this page here, on, on this here, the hearing, we have May seventh and May twenty-first.
The first and...
I think it's supposed to be the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth.
Okay, we can look at that.
I know this is just a proposal, it's a draft, but I, I think that instead of the seventh and twenty-first, I think that would be the fourteenth and twenty-eighth.
All right, we can, we can take a look at that.
I think the seventh is going to be the first Tuesday.
I see what you're saying now.
Oh, that's on the twenty-seventh. So, Memorial, Memorial Day is on the twenty-seventh, so we would meet on the Tuesday, the twenty-eighth. That's, that's probably fine. We've done that in, in the past.
I mean, not that I like meeting a Tuesday after a three-day weekend, but if we're sticking with the second and fourth, it could be the fourteenth.
That's probably fine.
You know, that May seventh should be, I think, should be May fourteenth.
Yeah, because that's the, uh, first and...
Maybe they tried to adjust for Memorial Day.
Yeah.
Something was being kind.
We'll, we'll, we'll take a look at it. I'll, we'll look at it and, um, we'll get back to the next meeting.
Package for the next meeting, yeah. Do I have to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Kay. Uh, all in favor? Five to nothing. We're adjourned at, uh...
Thank you.